...with, this has been an evolutionary process that's changed over the years. The first piece has been there for a while to ensure an exceptional quality of life and long-term viability, the city of North Richardson Hills. At one point, it was just, it stopped right there. Then, a little later on, the words "through local leadership and regional cooperation" were added. You can argue, you could argue that it, you could just stop right there. And it separates the goal and the tool. One of the things that organizations always struggle with is they sometimes confuse the tool with the goal. So you see, you saw that, you see that in the quality world. You know, quality, quality, quality. Well, Florida Power and Light Company was the very first U.S. company to win the Deming Award for Quality, which is the, kind of the pinnacle. It was Baldur's before there was Baldur's Award. And the new CEO came in and immediately started dismantling a lot of the effort because all the effort was going toward winning the Quality Award, not running the business. So, sometimes we turn tools into goals. So that is yours as it is right now. I thought I would bring you two or three others to look at it. Are you interested just to see? Okay. This is St. George, Utah. It's kind of what they do every day. Yeah. Now, St. George is an interesting community. It's, I hate to tell you this, but some of you would be considered Democrats in St. George. Even some of you who identify as Republicans in Texas, you would be a Democrat in St. George, Utah. At the same time, St. George also has an interesting place. They are the pickleball capital of America. More pickleball courts per capita than, they have all kinds of tournaments and stuff like that. It's a very cool community, beautiful, beautiful place. But theirs is very, very straightforward. Services that focus on people and advance a thriving community. Boom. This is the one that they are in the process of adopting. Enable exceptional quality of life and ensure physically responsible and thriving community. Now, for them, the physically responsible and thriving become very important because if you look at where Midlothian is, they are in the growth path right now. They've doubled their population in about the last 10 years. And so, they really wanted to go back and say, physically responsible, because they're struggling with the issue of debt right now. Philosophically, they want to minimize debt, and they also understand that people are coming whether they have infrastructure or not, in many cases. So they're having to move in that direction. But that purposeful, respectful, and proactive leadership goes back to the tone they're trying to set in their community. So, those are three other examples, and I offer that to offer yours. And let me just say, we don't, we can spend as much time on this as we want, but as you think about a mission, a purpose, this is why we exist. How does yours feel at this point?
So I've got a couple of comments on that. So first of all, the long-term viability, I guess I'm not even sure what that means. I mean, is Keller going to come and like, you know, take us over or something like that? I'm not even sure what that, yeah, what, what that is. And through local leadership and regional cooperation, that sounds great and everything, but I mean, I don't necessarily see, I guess, I would say our customer, but our resident in there, I mean, it's kind of implied with that exceptional quality of life. But I'd like to see a little bit more of the, you know, resident in there, you know, maybe like Midlothian with the financial responsibility, some other stuff like that.
Okay?
Yeah, I, I would, I, yeah, I don't understand long-term viability. Well, I know what it means, but I'm just like, as a city's, city standpoint, and local leadership and regional cooperation, we're really focused on, well, at least to me, it reads to me like we're focused on our leadership. No, the citizen is the leader. So we need to focus on citizens. And regional cooperation, I get it, the point, you know, it shouldn't be up there. That sounds like, well, that's what a county commissioner court does. You know, so we've got to understand our, our lane a little bit.
Randy, can I offer just a little bit of sort of-
Mm-hmm. Context is important.
Having been here when this mission was first created, and then hearing the tweets of, so viability, at one time, there was a concern, just to make sure that, again, it goes back to development, development standards, making sure that we are, we have the type of development that will bring in the revenue, to Randy's point about the value of a house to sustain its services or whatever. But it's not just about houses, it's about commercial development too, that would lend itself to the long-term viability, sustainability of our community and our effectiveness, efficiency in the budget. Does that make sense? So that was that, just not, not to say it's right or wrong, I'm just saying that was the reasoning for viability. And then, and then as far as local and regional leadership, you know, I, I understand the comments, you know, that came through, but that, our city, because of the regional, participation in regional groups such as RTC, which is where Tito is right now, that has opened us up to grant funding. So the relationships that council members have built over the years in, when they say local and regional groups, they're talking about committees such as the Mayor's Council. They're talking about Regional Transportation Council. And, and that Regional Transportation Council in particular controls a lot of the federal funding, all of it, related to highway and street construction. So, and then the Mayor's Council, that was also kind of a money move, because it originally started as a, they, they kind of controlled the community development, block grant funds. But the relationships developed through the Mayor Council with the county commissioners helped us with our partnerships on, you know, sometimes we work with the county to reconstruct roads and different things like that. And then also, like recently, they went through a bond program, and there was an allocation of the bond program that the commissioners could choose projects. And so, those, I'm, I'm saying that, say, relationships. So that's the reason why. It, it's, it's not any of my, you know, I'm not giving a right or wrong or indifferent, but just to understand how those words got in there.
Now, I appreciate that, you know, background on there. And I think that local leadership and regional cooperation is, I mean, that's the key. I mean, we're not an island out there.
Right.
We're not Wichita Falls out there by ourselves.
Right.
But, uh, you know, whether it belongs here or not, I guess. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for the background. So, we like to throw around business authors. I'm a Stephen Covey fan, so Seven Habits, everybody should read that book. And they, they do talk about mission statements, it's like, you know, personally, they can use it for business and so on and so forth. So I think how I take mission statements is, this is what we stand for, and then when you read it, you get it. You know, I know you're explaining it, don't get me wrong. But when the, the, the citizen out there, when they read it, you know, they're going to take it as, oh, you're not focused on us. So, that, that's something we should really think about when we're kind of crafting our mission statement.
Suzie.
Okay. So, when I, I'm glad Paulette explained all that, because it makes sense, but it's more, for me right now, right at this moment, the mission is more like for a council mission, not a city mission. That's the way I'm viewing it at the moment. And then, you have to make sure that all your goals and your objectives actually meet that mission. So, are our current goals and objectives, do, do they actually meet that? And if they don't, and those aren't our goals and objectives, then that has to be changed or edited or tweaked or whatever. And if it's a city mission, it needs to be a little more relationship towards the people, even though you're accomplishing the same thing, exactly what Paulette said. But does, do our goals and our objectives that we're doing, the things that we're doing, help us to reach that? To make sure that we can actually say that we are doing that, and that people can see it, you know? And that's why you have to come back every so often and tweak them. Where are we now? What has changed? What, what, what do we, what, where are we, where are we headed? Did we meet our goals? Do we not meet our goals? Do we need, is this still a viable thing?
I think the last time you tweaked this, as I recall, was probably six years ago?
It was, yeah, yeah.
Six, eight years ago?
And it made sense at the time.
Made sense at the time. But Suzie, you raised an important point, is who's the audience for this?
Right.
If you're looking at what our mission as a council is, okay, that's one audience. Or if we're looking at what's the, what's the mission of city staff slash the city organization, that's another thing. Or is this totally resident and constituent, both residents who live here and business residents who live, who are here? I, I consider them both residents in a different way. So I think that's an important piece. I mean, this one clearly is more of, when you add local and regional cooperation, regional leadership and local leadership, it, it's a more council-focused. You can go and say, we're looking for more something, city organization, what are we here to do? And what are we here to do, hopefully in support of our residents? So if you look at that one, that's totally resident-focused. It's the ultimate, I mean, that's a customer-focused mission. People and advanced community. If you look at this one, exceptional quality of life and ensure fiscal responsibility and a thriving community. You could stop that right there, and you go, that hits this group and this group. Now, you can say, purposeful, respectful, and proactive leadership. Now that becomes more council-driven, maybe, probably more. So, the, so let's, let's start with, who's the audience for this? Who are we doing this for? What are we trying to guide?
I think specifically what we're dealing with here is, this is the, the city council and the city government, it's the city government's mission-
Right.
-on behalf of the people.
Right.
So, it, it's, you know, it's specifically how we as an organi, if I think of more like a corporation, right, we're the board of directors, we have an organization, the stockholders, you know, care about this, but it's the board of directors saying, this is how we are going to manage the organization. And so I think that's how we approach the, the, the mission statement. And also, I think it needs to be, you know, this is the purpose, like, why do we exist? So just staying focused on the, the what is the priority of, what do we want to be about as a council and as a city government? Yeah. So, and I don't know what quality of life means, I think it's subjective. I mean, we can keep it at that, but it could be different to different people.
It is.
That's just something to think about. And then also, I think it misses an emphasis on business.
Business as a constituent group or as an operating principle?
Yeah, I mean, as far as how government operates and what this government is going to be about, I think we should potentially add something about making this a place that's easier, or the best place to do business, something along those lines.
Okay.
I'll say this, when I, I look at one, I, I think of my past mission statements, and it was always, I'm going to deliver this service at the best price in the quickest, most easy manner to acquire it, right? I mean, and not, and not be, you know, kind of nebulous in, in where I am. I, I, I don't dislike, I'll say that, the quality of life part, just because I think it is, I, that is, I heard people feeling like the, a goal perspective, when we're out there talking to a lot of people, you know, that we're trying, we're trying to maximize tax base versus quality of life. That was a, that was kind of a repeated thing, and, and at the exception of us, for our quality of life. So, people felt like that was being left out. So even though we put it in words, it clearly was not a communicated thing or embraced by people that live in our community.
Maybe a definition problem, though.
It, it could be a definition problem. I, I don't disagree with that. But, but saying and executing are two different things. You'll never hear me say I would run away from the idea of saying physically responsible about anything, because I, I think if we don't say it upfront somewhere, people don't think we are. Doesn't mean that we say it and they will believe it, but trying to think in terms of, I'm going to try to cast, vision cast myself out there a little bit, vision versus mission in my mind, but I think physically responsible is, is an important place. But, again, the easy to do business is another thing, is that mission or is that vision, sometimes those-
Yeah, it could go-
Sometimes they get crossed over just a little bit.
Right. I, I will say that one of the reasons why they chose long-term viability, the idea that words have meanings in different contexts, one of the ideas was to talk about long-term sustainability as opposed to viability. The challenge became that sustainable has become a code word in some areas for sustainable development, sustainable green technology, you know, what, right. Yeah. And so, they were very clear that, you know, it's not that we don't, we want to be, we're not trying to be irresponsible, but we don't want to confuse that with this notion of sustainability and the green environment. So that's why viability became a separate word. But if you think about sustainable as this thing has, we, we are physically responsible every, so that we can continue to grow and thrive, that was sort of the, the meaning of it.
Yeah, because if you look at the other two statements-
Right.
Yeah. I personally believe it should be straight to the point. What are we? You know, long-term viability, it's part of buzzwords, like I said, it could, it meant something this year, next year, it means something totally different, depends on who's reading it. Where if you look at the other two mission statements, it's straight to the point of what they are, but they also is 100% focused on who's the, the top boss, which is the citizen. So our mission statement should always be, start from there. And then, after that, just be plain spoken. What are we focused on? And kind of stay away from buzzwords.
I'm going to tag in here too. I think, you know, we're talking about objectives or what our focus should be on, I don't think growth is what our focus should be on, right? I, I think that has been a part of what we're, what we've talked about in the past. You know, we can grow our tax base, we, we already mentioned a couple of these things. But just being sensitive to the fact that we are pretty built out already, very minimal space left, but the emphasis should not be on, how many more people can we pack into the city, right? And that's so shifting back to quality of life, which is what you were talking about. And then, you know, on fiscal stuff or efficiency, if we put it as a purpose, maybe this is what you're kind of driving at, like I, this is not meant to call anyone out or anything like that, but I remember when we had the budget talks this past year, one of my, I, I said to the city manager and a couple of people, I said, hey, if you're going to ask me to raise taxes, I need to be able to prove to the people that we're being efficient with their money. And one of the problems, it seemed, which I know we could put something together, but it seemed like that just, that wasn't already a part of, of the process of how we do it, at least not in a way that's easily communicatable, communicable, whatever. And so, you know, I want to be able to say, here's how we saved money for you, here's how much money we saved, here's, here are all the things that we did to prove that we're being efficient and fiscal, you know, good stewards of your money. But it, it was more like, oh sure, we're doing that, but I, I don't know, I'll have to figure out how we can gather that information. It just didn't seem like it was prioritized to the part where, to the spot where it needed to be, if that makes sense. So perhaps, you know, making it a part of the mission and saying, no, like, this is why we exist, so how are you meeting the mission statement, and let's be very clear about that, so.
Let's talk about quality of life for a minute, because quality of life for some people means, well, you have amenities. We have parks, we have library, we have trails, we have, that's a quality of life. Being able to sleep in a room at night that you're not worried about a bullet flying through your window is also a quality of life issue. And the water coming out clean all the time is also a quality of life issue. And not having to take your car in for front-end alignment every two weeks is also a quality of life issue. So when you all think of quality of life, what do you think about? I'll give you an example. Anyone know where Murphy, Texas is? Murphy is out near Lake Levon. And Murphy was going through a growth spate years ago, several years back, and a lot of people were moving in, it was a growth area, but they were moving in sort of smaller lots and city kind of lots. And everybody was talking about, we need more parks for a quality of life. And there was a guy on council at the time, wonderful guy, didn't say much, but when he did, everybody kind of went, oh, he was like E.F. Hutton in the day. And he lived there forever, and he just finally raised his hand and said, seems to me if you wanted more green space, you should have bought a bigger lot. And he said, the quality of life for me is not having a park because I've got, that's not important. It's not important to my quality of life. Here's what is important. Sewer, water, roads, infrastructure. So, let's kind of understand, when you think of quality of life, what do you think about?
For me, it's, for me, you know, it's, safety is the first thing. I want to live in a community that's safe. And that also provides me with things that I, that I need to be able to get by on any given day, that I have my water and my electricity and my gas and my sewer and my garbage pickup, which I noticed, one of the comments in our deal was about excellent, but somebody ouched us this week. I saw a comment on, on Nextdoor, I think it was, and somebody was talking about their, their garbage pickup, and they said, ours is the best ever, you know? And I'm like, I had to go back through and see, you know, where it was coming from, you know, because it was pretty cool. So it's those public services that we expect. We expect a safe environment, we expect to have water, sewer, all that. So, that's part of the mission, because our goals are to provide those things. And we've talked about safety, safety and security being like basically at the very top.
I think also, quality of life is something that changes, not just from person to person, but as you grow through your life. Younger people who don't have kids may not care how the schools are. People who are raising a bunch of kids, like I am, you, you're concerned about the schools and the parks. And then as you get further along in your life, your kids have grown up and moved along, the schools aren't as important. Maybe other things are more important, accessibility and things like that. So I think, you know, it's a, it's a two-edged sword. Saying quality of life, while it might seem bad because it's such a broad statement, I think it's also good because quality of life to me means where, whatever season you are in, whoever you are, your fundamental needs and desires for where you live are being met. And I think that's a good thing.
If, if you look, like out on the web, and you're going to go to a hotel, and you're looking at the score of the hotels, right? And you look at St. Regis, which is all very expensive to go to, and it's, it's their, the boutique for Marriott. You'll, you'll look at it, and it'll have a, you know, four-two, four-three, and they're comparing it to the Plaza in New York every time, right? And then you go to, that's right down the street from where that is, and it's a Spring Hill Suites, which are, you know, fine, and it'll have a four-five. Well, it's expectations, right? Quality of life is expectations and where you are with that. I, I'll say the, and so, what do I, what do I pay for something, and what do I get out of it, right? It's the, it's, you know, my, my services, and it is safety, and it is trash pickup, and, and we do have the best trash pickup ever. And it is, you know, what am I, what am I getting out of what I'm paying for? And, and that's what their expectation's being met. The repeated conversation was that, what I broke down to the, the balance scale was maximizing tax value, quality of life. It always boiled down to overcrowding and saying, I, and my, is my infrastructure up to date in association with what I'm doing with the overcrowding? The examples that I was given more than once, water pressure in two different areas of the city, we've already discussed that. And, and how can I be this close to a water tower and not have any pressure? And I understand that now. I understand that now. But, and they're giving me pounds of pressure, by the way, that's coming out of the faucet. And, and the other, and the other was, is that, is that water main breaks and saying, you know, I had a water main break, and I called in after it'd been a couple of days out in the front of my house, wasn't bad, but it was leaking across the street, and they said, good luck, you're number 10 on the list. It's a good public works shortage of people. So it's, the expectation is, my city's wasting water because they're not getting to me. They still had water, but, I mean, that's how you kind of broke that down. It still came down to, to me, the, the inverse relationship is, you know, maximize tax base or quality of life. Now, people, some people turn that into, we need more green space, right? I mean, that was other, and it's like, well, you know, and you're in hometown, I don't know what I could tell you. I mean, you decided to live here, you know? And so, it, it's, it's hard, like you said, early on, it's hard to quantify that, actually, you know, or, or define it for how people did, but I, I still think it's expectations of cost versus delivery of service.
So how would you all feel, one of the things I've heard is, it's important to talk about best place to do business and fiscal responsibility. I think you've got, you're all pretty well aligned on where you are on quality of life, so I think we can say that knowing that. But if you said, enable an exceptional quality of life and ensure fiscal, responsible, and thriving community. Now, do those concepts work as a, here's what we're here to do every day? By the way, I'm not going to let you use exactly their words, because you don't want to be them and they don't want to be you. But conceptually, does, are those things important? If, if it just said that, would you think this captures who, what we're here to do?
I think if we stopped it right there, I think that would be better than what we have today.
I don't think it goes far enough to emphasize what I think we should make a priority, which is emphasis on business.
Business friendly.
Business friendly. However we were that, I don't know, but something adding to that respect.
Yeah, I, I would agree, like, if you stopped that community, great. Then, look at fiscal responsibility and, and things of that nature. Because like I said, I, I'm just against always like, it's about the best leadership. Like, I get it, like, that's why we had an election, we got it. Ours is about, you know, what we're going to focus on that's important to the people and to the, and to the city of North Richardson Hills. So I, I like half that. Now it's, I guess, adding a few caveats to it.
I, I, I don't want to say that because of my belief that, that always stood on, city, school, district, businesses, it's all in there together. And so, yeah, so leaving off a purposeful and all that, I can get that through your goals and objectives and meaning of things.
And, and if I can, the reason I think it deserves emphasis is because I feel like there is a reputation that we've set for ourselves, that we need to create a shift in the public perception. And so by making a substantial change, like changing our mission statement, and then promoting that, saying, hey, this is a new NIH, this is what we're about, I think that's something that we can grab onto and we can actually use to our advantage as we look for potential growth opportunities or whatever it is. I think that's something that we can grab on to and we can actually use to our advantage as we look for potential growth opportunities or whatever it is.
What do you think, Russ?
Well, I agree with what you guys are saying, what, the way to combine them all down to one. I know when we were, when I was out talking to people, a lot of the things that came up was our tax rate. Unfortunately for the school district, I dumped the school district under the bus every time. I say, you complain about ours, you go to the school district, there's the one charging you there. So that was how I validated our city, so. And I know that Richard David won't appreciate that, but that's okay, I said what it ever Tuesday, so. But I just think there's a way for us to explain to, to our customer base, which is our citizens and our businesses, that both are very important to us. And the businesses, we need to be sensitive to their needs as well as people who are wanting parks and road trails and things like that. So there's, there's a balance here somewhere, we have to find that balance. And I think there's a way to do it, but I, I agree with Blake. I think we need to list it, including everyone. If we leave one off and say, well, this is quality of life for our citizens, then we just left business out. And the city has gotten a reputation extremely hard to do business with as a business. So if we somehow blend the two together and say, you know, it's quality of life, quality of business life, as well as quality of personal life. And somehow bring the two together, now that makes everybody included and the businesses, oh, well, maybe they've changed their philosophy and give us another chance. And like Ceezy was saying, there's some of those restaurants that are talking about coming back up and starting up again. I'd love to go back after the same, I was thinking L's one of them, they're, they're talking about coming back in business again. I'd love to have one pull right back over in the city. Their lot still sits empty, so let's go after it.
They had that great salad bar.
Yeah, they do.
No question about it.
But I think it's just a way, a way we can, I think if, when we're doing it, we need to include the business, residential and business community. Because I think that, I think business community will relate to that.
So I, I threw this out just to give you something to shoot at. That it talks about residential and business community. The reason I chose thriving as opposed to easy to do business with, I want to throw this. I don't know that you want to say to the, everybody, we're easy to do business with because that means, oh, okay, so I'm a vape shop. We're going to be easy to do business with. But if you say, we want a thriving business community, then it sort of goes back to, that's what we want. And the goal is the thriving community, easy is the way to get there. That was some of my rationale of, of thinking of it that way. But does it work to say, fiscally responsible and thriving residential and business community? Does that work in concept?
I, I agree about the easy part, by the way. I, that's, you don't want to say, we're easy, but just want to say, business friendly, right? But thriving.
I, I would, I want to, I want to push back a little bit because I think we lose the emphasis the way it's written currently. I think it just kind of, you know, it, it's just thin there, yes, or whatever. But I want to stand out. And I understand the, the, the potential concern we have of attracting businesses that we don't want in NRH that don't really make this a better place to live potentially, depending on who you are, right? But that doesn't mean we're, we, like, that doesn't change how we go about it necessarily when those particular obstacle, or options come up. But as far as like, what we want to emphasize and project out to the region, to other businesses in other states when they're looking to move, who knows? When we're looking at small businesses that want to start up, like I think the emphasis needs to be, this is the, to me, the best place to start a business. Like this is the best place to conduct your, or to, to do business. Like it, and plus I'm a marketing guy, it sounds good. NRH is the best place to do business versus just, we're a business friendly city. So I could be wrong, y'all push back, I don't care. I just, I'm, from the marketing perspective of it, and I think we can really benefit from emphasizing in our marketing, having some sort of tag like that.
To be the entertainment capital of Texas, is that what you're?
Something, you know what I mean, something like that. Christmas capital, yeah. But, but you know, that's what people think about. People think like, it gets stuck in their mind, they're like, oh yeah, it's a great place to be. And then as far as the shift within the culture of our government, of, of, of the, the staff here and whatnot, it's like, okay, we need to start thinking how to make this the best place to do business. And I, I, that's what I'm looking for, is some sort of, like a earthquake or seismic shift in how we think about this.
I also would add, is that this is our mission statement. People, I would, I, everything we do, I don't care what level we're at, the audience is always the resident, the citizen. There's nothing that we keep here close to us like, oh, this is ours, that, that, that's not how this works. I do believe the mission statement does, or it needs to have literally the word citizen focus in it. Because that's the point of why we're here. And then it's business and everything else included with that. And so.
I hate the word citizen, by the way.
Resident, yeah, I mean, you could use either or terms, but so, NRH understands that we are focused on them. Because the brutal honest truth is, they believe that they have not been focused on. That's what I heard walking around. So just to throw out there again, that this is the mission statement we're going to base our governing on. They have to know too that we are focused on them, that's number one, because they're the ones voting sent.
Look, I agree with that, I, I, all I'm saying is, we need to blend the citizens with the business. We need to let them both know they're very important to us in going forward, that, that, that's where our focus is going to be on. Making sure everyone's included in this mix because that's where, that's where the city is getting paid from, so we have to include everybody in it.
I'm going to, I'm going to give you something to shoot at here. Dr. Nito Cabane's been a friend of mine for about thirty years. He's president of High Point University. And the mission statement at High Point University says this, at High Point University, we provide an exceptional education in, in, in a world class, you know, in a world-class environment by, by caring people. So it's very clear, we provide a world-class education, exceptional environment, caring people, that's it. So the focus, his idea is, here's what we provide, here's the, here's how, and here's who does it. So if you look at something like, to enable an exceptional quality of life in a fiscally responsible resident focus and business friendly environment.
I like those, I think the resident, I would just kind of switch around the resident focus and fiscally responsible, not that we're not doing that, but just the quality of life is the residents, and then we're fiscally responsible and business friendly, but I mean.
Okay. That's order of words, so, but conceptually, do, are those, are, do those words resonate? I'll go back and change those around real quick, Kelvin?
Also a comma before the word and, I'm an Oxford comma.
Yes. I get it.
I'll die on that hill.
By the way, are, are you, are you one space or two space after the period? You had to do two, right?
I think we changed our mission to, we want steak and ale.
Craig? Craig, the whole, the whole city depends on you now, Craig. There's no pressure.
I, I don't.
I'm holding out for hula hands personally, but go ahead.
Um, I just, I, I mean, I, I like the general direction, sure, and maybe that's what you're asking for only, but I don't like how it's written. I don't think it's, like, I, I don't, I don't, something about the, in a, well, no, no, no. I, I, I'm very open, but no, best, I want to see best, no, I'm kidding. It's the in a, in a blah, blah, blah environment, I, I think that's what's getting me, I don't like the, to do this in a environment. It's just not, and, and keep in mind, guys, like, you know, organizations spend weeks, you know, at least weekends deciding just this, just this. And, and so, let's not be too quick.
I'm doing a project right now for a very large company that we're spending, so far, we have been working on this for two months.
Yeah, so let's, you know.
Right, so, yeah, this can be tweaked.
Our first day doing every year is mission and vision, and that's what we do on our first day. Those two things that do.
Yeah, so.
So what if instead of in a, we said by creating a?
Sure.
Resident focus, yeah.
I'm doing the old fashioned way, create and then send a name.
Yeah, he is, he is, that's, that's.
To create a vibrant, thriving community by prioritizing the needs and wellbeing of our residents, fostering a business-friendly environment that encourages innovation and growth and ensures fiscal responsibility to maintain sustainable and efficient use of resources. We are dedicated to enhancing the quality of life of all residents promoting development. You screwed this up, make it concise.
Now, the, the key word around enable, you could say we provide, but technically, it comes, it comes down to what's the role of the government? Is the role of the government to provide it, or is the role of the government to enable it? And typically in a, in sort of a free market economy, the government enables or restrains it doesn't provide in many respects. So, um, you could, this, this moves you a little closer in that direction. Exceptional quality of life by creating resident-focused, fiscally responsible and business-friendly community.
Are you thinking prioritize instead of creating?
Well, I mean, no, I'm, I'm fine with either, prioritizing is fine, but it's more of the, the mixing, I think, of community and government. Like, I, I don't know, I'm just talking out loud, so just go with me. But like, the, the mission statement is the direction to city staff on how we should be operating. And I get that when it comes to fiscally responsible, I guess the community, I don't know, exceptional quality of life.
I think it's also there to set expectations for people also, it's not just a message for us. It's a message so people outside of the city, council and staff can say, well, this is what they're about.
Yeah, I, and I would say too, I like to create, I think it sounds better, you know, for a normal person, enable sounds too corporate, to me, just impression. To create an exceptional quality of life for our citizens, maybe residents, whatever, by being, yeah. I think, I think that's where I'm kind of losing it. Go with me, I'm just talking out loud, yeah.
I, I like what you're thinking.
She's like, I'm not touching that with a ten foot pole.
There's a cow prod at the end of that ten foot pole. But if you look at this again through, first off, to enable, that is a little corporate speak. But now you're going back to, what is, does government enable or does it create?
I get your point, but, whatever.
Yeah, and, you know, by the way, you can disregard all of this, part of my responsibility is to say, have you thought about this? And you're going to go, oh, he's heading in that direction, and then I'll go, have you thought about this? And you go, he's a hundred and eighty degrees. That's part of my job is to prod your thinking. So I, I want you to think about, is there a better word for enable? For example, I've had people say, to empower. What's that? To enhance. I've had all those words that have been tossed out before. And then community, the reason I threw community up there for you to think about is this. Of the things that you are most proud of, one of the things that I heard you say is NRH is a community that when you grow up here, you want to stay here. And I, I think that, again, by looking who's in the room, that's a powerful message about who you are. And so community is sort of designed to pick that up, right? That this is a community, you take care of each other, you look out for each other, you.
Can we use, instead of enable, foster?
Yes.
Sure.
Because I, I, I was kind of stuck on the word enable because it's as if government is allowing this to occur. And that's not my version of what government should be.
So what, tell me what's the difference in your mind? Because I think that's an important distinction.
I think, because, well, like I said, enable is like, oh, we're allowing you, we're kind of like, allowing, you know, we're giving you permission to do that. No, our job as city council is that we're, we're fostering as if we're in cooperation with everyone. So we're with you, we're not above you. I guess that's, in my head, where foster enables the difference.
I want to make the case for create really quick, okay? Just hold up. And the reason I think it's okay to say this is because the mission statement is directed to the government, to the, to the, the organization that we're leading. And so like, if I were to say, you know, to create an exceptional quality of life for residents through, whatever word here, through.
Being fiscal responsibility and.
Through, yeah, through citizen-driven fiscal responsibility and business-friendly environment, or something like that. Or government, actually, I don't even like community, like, to, to create an exceptional quality of life for citizens by being citizen-driven or citizen-led or citizen-driven, whatever priorities, fiscal responsibility and creating a business-friendly environment.
I would agree with what you're saying, I feel like you're just, we're saying it twice. Right, right there is what you're kind of saying, I understand you want to break it up a little bit.
What do you mean?
I meant you're adding four sentences where one sentence will do. And that's why I kind of feel like we're, I know we're kind of getting stuck on the.
I, I changed like two words, I don't know what you mean.
It just, I feel like it just says that, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, so the only, I guess what I'm saying is changing the emphasis from, to, to create a community, I'm not trying to create a community. I'm trying to create a government for the community, right? So it's to create an exceptional quality of life for our citizens through being resident-focused, fiscally responsible and a, with a business-friendly environment, our government, or something along those lines.
All right, so let me come back and test that because the, what you said is an important distinction, I want to get pulse check for everybody. First off, are we trying to, the, the huge point? Are we looking for a business, or community or government? That's a big distinction, it's, it's an important one, I don't want us to gloss over that, right?
Is the mission statement going to be about, like, this is the mission for our community, or is this the mission statement for our city government?
This is, yeah, it, it should drive council and staff and, and to the residents to say, this is why this entity exists.
I would make the argument that it's for the government. Like, our mission here in this room, on this page, city council goals, mission statement. The mission of city council is to create an exceptional quality of life for the residents of our city that's resident-focused, fiscally responsible, business-friendly. Government, through our government, because we're administering the government. So we're doing it for the community, but our mission here is to create this entity, this organization, or to, you know what I mean? So we're doing it for the community, but our mission here is to create this entity, this organization, or to, you know what I mean?
So it gets back to, you're saying it's, this is for the council's mission statement.
Well, it's for the government, for the entire organization.
The, the council leading the organization, the entity of the government. I'm not making NRH's community mission statement, like, NRH is a great place to live, yeah, we have it, great place to live, place, play and all that stuff.
Can I just say, I'm gonna have the courage to say this, um, I don't like the word government in there, because understand that the staff that you have now, we see ourselves as not just the government, but part of the community. And so, when we see things like, we're the government, or we're the bureaucrats, or whatever, it's a little bit offensive to those of us that work here now, because that's not how we see ourselves. We see ourselves as part of the community, we have important roles, leadership roles, um, so, I don't like the word government, I would, I would be more for the word environment, um, or something like that, yeah.
Or just drop it all together.
There's a little redundancy in resident twice, I don't know how you feel about that, we can find a different word, but. There's, there's a.
I hope finally we can use citizen, I was like, I've got seventy-five hundred. Record, two and a half times the previous. Some of them came by.
All right.
The one that attacked, aiming over and.
That, that moves you. All right, this is a little bit, this is where I like, I, I want to have on my optometrist the thing right now, is like, is it A or B at this point? What's your reaction to seeing that?
I still don't like the word create, it creates like under enable too, like, we're, we're granting you permission, and that shouldn't be the, the case, government-wise.
I don't either, that.
I was gonna say, we may have, we may have to thumb wrestle.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think that's a bad, I don't think that's a bad word.
I think, yeah, I mean, I guess foster might fall, fall under that too, I guess.
Need to do foster, I, and I do like, I, I, I like the word foster, but it, I don't know if foster works either. Promote, prioritize.
You like promote?
I do, I do like promote, which feels like it's in the same vein as foster.
Thank you, Suzie, Suzie's right again. And. I, I think throwing in environment at the end makes more sense too, like, I think, because if we're just saying environment, like, it's, it's, yeah. Creating a culture, environment, yeah.
Well, if you say though, by being. These things. Yeah, by being, we're gonna be those things, by being resident-focused, fiscally responsible, and business-friendly. That gives you a sense of community without saying community.
I like it. Except for the two residents, so, should we change the first resident to community? No, I took that from, Suzie said that too, I'm not think, Suzie said it, she didn't really say it, but she said it. Yeah. 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 I like it.
Print up the T-shirts.
Okay. Paulette, you like it?
So let's think about.
It's less boring than the first.
I, I, I am interested in staff reaction, by the way, directors welcome, department heads are welcome.
Yeah.
That was it.
By the way, by the way, directors, let you know, when we all introduced ourselves this morning, everyone stood up, introduced where they were from, and all sang their high school school songs, so we'll start right here next.
With the IT guy.
Only kidding, right? But, I'm curious, staff, the idea of this, again, focuses, it's, this is what we do as a council and government, when we say as a city government, which includes both staff and council, this is what, this is why we're here every day. So reading through that lens. Guess I. What do you think?
It's, it's much warmer than the current one.
Well, I'm sort of with him, I'm, I'm curious what here, here and around here think, because they're the ones selling this.
I wanted to go with best in there, best business, they didn't like it.
Yeah, well, I'll, so I'll start the, the speaking for the staff, um, in that, well, I, I speak for me, but I, I do think you've accomplished the, what you wanted to, which is, it's, it's focused on the residents and also on the businesses. Um, I like the brevity of it, um, and earlier, the first one, the first draft y'all started out with, to me, was kind of boring. And it, and so, I felt like it's less boring, no, it's good, I think it's good, I think we can, this is something that we, we can get behind, and I think we feel, we feel like we are, we are this way, um, already, so. I mean, we, we need to get better at it, uh, we're good at it, we need to get great at it, right?
You can, we can explain this, this is easy to understand, some of them get really worried and go, what are they saying? I mean, this is very specific, and it's everything that we've talked about.
If I can say too, the only real detailed stuff from the last one was local leadership and regional co- cooperation, I mean, this one is like, no, 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 we're about resident-focused, fiscal responsibility, and business-friendly, like, three lasers at those things.
Okay, again, if council can stop long enough, I'd like to hear the staff and people around the room make some comments as well.
Well, staff, by the way, if, if you got nothing, it's okay too, right? It's, you know, we, you don't have to make something up.
Okay, I'll put everybody out of their misery, um, so, this is both concise, which is important, when you're giving direction, to just say it, say what you mean, and, and, and be clear and, and simple in that. But also make sure that there is enough meat, that we are clear as to what the expectations are. This is certainly a shift, so, you know, we certainly receive that our shoulders are now going to be pointed in a specific direction, which is really at our residents, um, and you all have certainly cleared that up for us, that, you know, instead of that regional piece, um, that we're really going to focus inside the boundaries of, of NRH. Uh, but this is also a collective, it's not just sort of the government, we are working with other players, which includes the business community, and these are decisions that we, we don't make alone, um, and things that we don't do by ourselves in order to create exceptional, um, quality of life. That, that's, that is a partnership, we do with other people, and we're constantly trying to reconcile, um, those other partners with the values and the interest, um, of our citizens, um, and what is best for the community in terms of that long-term view, not just the short term, so I, I think this captures it.
So here's a question before you go, before you go on, Alicia, is there still. A place for regional cooperation and, and even leadership within this context?
I, I absolutely believe so, I, there's, there's a lot of cities that, I, I read their, you know, strategic plan, if you can find it on their website, um, and that, that doesn't mean they abandoned the idea of working regionally, uh, with anything, it just, they didn't call it out either. Uh, they focused, they focused more inwardly, and, and for the city itself versus, we're gonna focus out.
Right.
And from a distraction perspective, when you're reading it, it's not as, that was a distraction to me versus, and Caroline was gonna say something, so go ahead, Caroline.
Sorry, at this point, I think a lot of it has been said already, I, I echo what Trudy said, I think the, the clarity is, is terrific, it is concise, um, it's also very authentic, because it doesn't have, as, as Ricky mentioned, the buzzwords. It's, it's, it's straight to the point, and I think it perfectly encapsulates, like Paulette said, what we're already about and are working to get better at. Uh, we're not, we're not changing course, we're just clarifying what, what we're about.
Okay, so I do agree with everybody's comments, and when I look at items, you need to make sure that your citizens understand what you're trying to share with them. So I look at this from an agenda perspective, where when we do our captions, the general public needs to understand and know what the council's gonna be considering and discussing at the agenda, and this case in point, this is perfect.
So one of the things in school districts, and Mayor, you will remember this from your days, is that ideally, the things that you work on as council, things that come up to you, should focus, you should be, fully be able to draw the line. Now, there's some regulatory stuff that you have to do and all that, right? So we know that, but the business things, the business of approving things should, gets looked at through this lens. Now, in the school district, there's actually, in Texas, a huge effort around student outcomes. And one of the things that they started looking at was school board agendas. Uh, they look at agendas of school board meetings to see what percentage of school board agendas are focused on student outcomes. Because that's the widget we're trying to create here, right? I mean, with, with a school district, we know success is graduating someone who is college and university ready, military ready, or trade school ready. That's pretty, right, that's a successful graduate. Uh, with here, we have a number of different things, but if we look at our agenda, the things that are coming to us, to say, are we looking at, you know, as everything we're approaching, are we looking for things through that lens? And also, are we deciding through that lens? That changes the focus. You like it? Book it? Good, congratulations. Talk about vision. Your vision, consciously created picture of how you would ideally like the company, or the, this is the one I use for corporations, but the, the city, the organization, to look, feel, and act. The consciously created picture, if you will, it's that, it's something I'm not sure you ever get to, it's that mirage in the middle of the road that you saw as a kid driving with your parents on summer vacation. As soon as you get there, it's moved down the road a little bit. So this is how you've talked about your vision in the past, and the key word there, the city of choice, to live, work, and play. Now, at first blush, that was the vision, to be the city of choice for people to live, work, and play. Then later, it was updated to, expanded to include quality neighborhoods, exceptionally family living and leisure, in connection to great business and job opportunities. So those things were highlighted out, it started off with live, work, and play. By the way, every city wants to be the ideal place to live, work, and play. Nobody, if you look at anybody's website, nobody says, hey, move here, you won't like living here, there's no place to work, and there's nothing to do. Nobody's gonna say that, but the key part is, city of choice came from that idea, that was our vision, that's who we wanted to become. So let's start with that, any reaction, what's your reaction to this as a vision of where you're trying to get to? Go ahead, Blake.
I talk too much, so. Talking about that, you know, culture of trust and friendliness, anyway, no, I'm kidding. Um, I, I, I like the tagline at the top, that's not necessarily a huge problem for me, but I, I think there is room for us to do something unique and exciting here, maybe emphasis on making this the best place to do business, perhaps, just throwing it out there. You know, it's, it's a connection to great businesses and job opportunities, that's so boring to me, I mean, it's, it's like, I, I don't know, there's nothing unique, there's nothing like, exciting that, that will drive, um, life in the culture, in, in the way that it's written, so, I just hope that we can do something more exciting, that's all.
Yes, let me share a couple of others with you, just as an example, I, I mentioned St. George's a while ago, this is became, this, this was their vision, an active community rich in culture with a diverse and vibrant economy that supports people doing great things. It's kind of cool.
Yeah, ours kind of sounds kind of like a secondary mission statement, again, yeah.
Right, but that's who they want to become. Midlothian, active, unique community with a vibrant economy focused on our future, we're honoring our heritage. Again, it's very important for them, they have a huge heritage in the city of Midlothian, historically, um, and it's not just being the cement capital of Texas, that they look at it much broader than that, as they should.
Active makes me think of a retirement community.
Yeah. This is what Mansfield chose. Vibrant city for people and businesses that value world-class experiences, culture, quality, and the second-to-none level of community services in a hometown environment. So. Out of those four, I'm curious, which one resonates with you most?
I could already tell you, it's probably gonna be Mansfield. That, that, that setup, I like that, compared to ours currently.
You know, I, I think of companies, and I just pulled up a few, because I was thinking about them, and I, I asked for one, and it gave me a twenty, um, like Disney, to make people happy, right? Those are usually a lot simpler than lots of words, right? It's, where do I want to be, what do I want to get, Nike is to bring inspiration, innovation to every athlete in the world, um, you know, Tesla, of course, is creative play on words, which is to accelerate the world's transition to sustainable energy. And so that's, that's a, that's a really big goal, right? I mean, they, you know, of course, Elon Musk is a big thinker, but, um, it's, it's, it's projection, right? Vision is more projection than.
Right, it's more projection of, of who, who you're trying to become.
Yeah, and, and, and the current one with all those extra bullets down there kind of gets a little muddled to me, I mean, it's better, it's better with just the tagline, than it is with the added stuff.
Right, yeah, so a city of choice becomes almost a tagline at that point.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, if you think about visions and missions are not taglines, they're marketing taglines, they're marketing, they, they should encompass that. By the way, does anyone know what Starbucks' vision slash branding statement is?
Rip people off of expensive cup coffee?
And the answer is, you don't, they don't need one, they're Starbucks. All you need is, that, that logo has become so iconic that people know exactly what it means to them, whether it's, this is a coffee, this is community, or this is ripping people off, whichever one, they're okay with that, right? So when, when my friend, Dr. Cabane says that High Point University, and this is what he says, we are a God, country, family university, we are the number-one life skills university in the United States. Now, that's what their vision was to become. And, and he said, we know initially, but as soon as we say that, that there are some people that we're not right for. But, there's a whole bunch of other people that go, where have you been all my life? So, again, you could say, if you want to continue that choice monit- So, again, you could say, if you want to continue that choice moniker, you could say, "The city of choice for people and businesses that value those things." That would be a way that you sort of honor that, and it also keeps you from having to change your city of choice logo initially, because we're trying to be physically responsible.
That's what I was asking Paulette when I first started the question, before I said anything, how much is it going to cost me if I change that?
Yeah, but you could say, you could still keep the city of choice, but if you did something like this, "A city of choice for people and businesses that value these things." That could get you there without having, Paulette having to find money in your budget.
I like that as far as the start. I don't know necessarily that I like this list of things.
I don't agree with that.
Yeah, so I just don't know what the list should be. I don't, maybe we need to tie it into the mission, you know, talk about trusted by citizens or, you know, I don't know, I don't know, but just a different list.
So here's what I'd like for you to do. You have post-it notes in front of you. If you would, do you like this notion of the city of choice for people and businesses who, as a starting point, or that? Do you like that as a starting point? Good. Everyone write your top five words that should follow that. All right, everyone have your words? Hand them in. See what we got. Did you, go together and write two of those five? Still working on yours?
We were putting them on different ones.
That's okay, that works. That works.
You get the merits.
That works.
Yeah. That one's completely different. I completely, completely different route. At least now we'll know which one's blank.
Now we know who the true conservative is.
No, 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 no. Oh, I forgot one, that's a good one, let me put that on there. Fiscal responsibility. Some just have more practice at it than others.
Any others? You got, you're done? Tell them, still working?
Come on, man.
Well, I'll go with Joe.
Here's something he'll finish, right?
You're giving us a thought.
All right, so, by the way, interestingly enough, these go from the very specific, as I would expect, to the very conceptual. So on the specific side, who value? Physical responsibility, safety, family-focused. A lot of safety showed up. Enjoyable recreation, welcoming, those things. The more aspirational, did you put community? Oh, convenience. I thought you were going to put community on there, then I was going to go, wait a minute. Now, the very aspirational, the city of choice for people who value freedom, happiness, family, tradition, and principles. That's extreme, you know, that's very aspirational for, you know, I mean, it's not a specific focus, but if you think about it, first off, what was your reaction to that? Let me read it. "The city of choice for families and businesses that value freedom, happiness, family, tradition, and principles."
Freedom makes me think we need to close the jail then. It's like, I'm not a city of choice.
So again, it's extremely conceptual and it's broad in its thinking, it's not specific, it's very outcome-focused. You know, that's at one end, and then the other is services, community, convenience. So let's talk directional at this point. Vision statements are somewhat by nature aspirational. Which is why you rarely read vision statements on websites that say, "Our goal is to be mediocre, our vision is to be mediocre at best." Now, a lot of companies, if they were truthful, that would be their vision statement, but that's not what they say. So from an aspirational standpoint, do you want to be more service-focused, which is convenience, safety, those are clear services that we provide? Or do you want to be more outcome individual, outcome-of-lives-focused? What do you want people to experience?
The marketer in me says the second. Good for you.
I like a little bit of both, to tell you the truth.
You like what?
I mean, that's where it ends.
You're a fit sitter.
So I like the ultra-specific services, I guess that was where mine was kind of focused on a little bit, but I also kind of like the aspirational a little bit as well. Because at the end of the day, if someone picks somewhere to live, you're going to think, I'm going to be here forever, my next generation will be here. What are they going to get out of this spot compared to any spot in Texas or any spot in the country?
So I would be somewhat remiss if I didn't tell you there's a potential downside to City of prosper, Texas. At one point, had in their vision or their values or something, it's the city where everyone feels valued. And they decided to change that after a group of citizens came to council, asked for something to be approved, council turned them down, and as they walked out, they began to chant, "We don't feel valued, we don't feel..." Now, they thought, okay, maybe that's true. So I could see something going, yeah, I'm not happy. Now, cynicism, we'd go, well, which one are you then? Going back to the seven dwarfs, right? You're not happy, okay, you're grumpy, which one are you? But there is a danger that somebody's going to go, I'm not, your choice is not going to make me that. At the same time, you know that that detractor is going to detract every, regardless of what you say, there's the danger for detraction. So one of the comments that was made earlier today, 98% of the time, we vote and 100% agreement, we're lockstep on 98% of the issues. Which sort of goes to the 2% of the time, we're different. I think it was you said that, 98% of the time. Now, if that's true, or even if it's 95% of the time, that's okay. From a council standpoint, do you focus on the 95% of the time or 98% of the time you're together, or the 2%, the 5% when you're not? That's a focus. But if you believe that 98% of your folks, or 95%, want a place that values freedom, happiness, family, tradition, and principles, then you go, you know, this is who we are. If you don't value those things, maybe there's, we might not be the right place for you. So as an example, my friend at High Point tells every student athlete, by the way, they, when Tubby Smith retired from college, Tubby now coaches at High Point. He played basketball there in college, he came back and now is the coach. But they tell people, they tell their student athletes, when the start, when the national anthem is played, you stand, you don't sway, you stand with your hand over your heart, and if you don't sing, you at least hum. And if you don't do that, if you can't do that, you're not an athlete for us. So some of this is defining not only who you will be, but who you won't be. And that's what boundaries were. I mean, if you think about national boundaries, borders were created because that's the part where countries said, "We will defend this. If you come this way, we'll defend it," right? If you cross that line, we'll defend it. If you stay on this side of yours. So these are, this is sort of talking about your line. So with that in mind.
GPS signal lost.
Really? Wow. Okay. How do you feel about that? You know, how far do you? Do you like that approach? I've got two that say, yeah, we kind of like that. What do you think, Russ? Suzie, how about you?
I'm curious what all of them were again, or.
Yeah, so there's that group, and then there's safety, business-friendly, which we say that already, so maybe we don't need to say that. Community, family-focused, welcoming, convenience, enjoyable recreation, economic opportunity, exceptional quality of life, again, we sort of say that, that we value, people who value community, opportunity, services, those were the.
What were the five of the first one, the freedom?
Freedom, happiness, family, tradition, and principles.
Principles is vague, but I like the rest.
You know, not for freedom or anything, but I mean, getting back to your point before, oh, well, hey, I want the freedom to be able to, you know, tear down this fence and do whatever I want to, or build up a, you know, secondary thing here. So you get into the, hey, you said it would be free, but I can't do X, Y, and Z because of city regulations.
Perhaps the same, perhaps the same maybe idea, but we use different words, you know, somewhere in there. So not freedom necessarily, but, I don't know. To me, it sounds like limited government, it sounds like, you know, less regulation. That's what I think about when I think of freedom. I don't know the key word to use here, though.
Yeah, one of my, one of the other cities I worked with talk about, they talk about government steering with a light hand, which I think is, I'm sure that goes in your vision statement, it's an interesting conceptual idea, that the role of government is to steer with a light hand. Let's play with some ideas. You guys ready for a break? You need to take 10? All right, you take 10, I'll put some stuff up, we'll come back. These are the words that you, and a few of these were repeated, like safety and what have you, so I didn't include those twice. Now that you see these, by the way, this list is way too long. This is here for you to react to. Now that you see these words, I'm curious which ones, I forgot convenience, I'm sorry. I'll put convenience up there.
Well, as you're topping that out, tradition to me, I'm not sure if that kind of fits into North Richardson Hills, not like we have a, you know, huge historical area or anything like that, so it's.
Green Valley, it's quite a car.
You know, I was more thinking in the terms of people that are born here, stay here, and generationally are here. And that doesn't mean I'm, I'm not married to anything, by the way, so. Yeah, the Hurst way. You know, let me throw this out, because I didn't say what Paulette answered the question when I asked her early on. That it's not really everywhere and it wouldn't, it's not a costly item to say, change it, right?
Right.
And, so just kind of, I walked over to Craig, so now I'm blaming him. But I said, "What are your thoughts on where we are with this, the whole idea and the path we're traveling?" And he was honest with his opinion, which was, the city of choice is a bit genericized and used by lots of people. And confirmed with Paulette as well, that that's the case. So if we're looking to be, take something different, you know, of something we've used for 20-some-odd years, I didn't know we said that really.
Thirty years.
Thirty years. Is it tired and you want to go a different direction altogether? I'm just, I'm saying this, I don't really have a feel for this or not, you know what I mean?
Now, an option, you could look at all that and go, how about if we just had that
That's an option. To me, if we stayed with the city of choice and this, that, I would say yes, but without, you know, just getting rid of all the other clutter.
Well, I'm sort of with that city of choice, we've heard it, like you said, for hunting I don't know that I'd be offended in changing it, so.
I'm sorry, what was that, Russ? I'm sorry, what was that, Russ, you said you would or would not?
In all honesty, I, I don't really, I don't remember like, North Richardson Hills, city of choice. Like, I honestly don't remember like that's just a thing we say, or heard, or the tagline for the city. So this has been around for thirty years, and we have really used it.
I only remember it because I've seen Greg, Craig talk to groups and use it in presentations. It's really the only place I've seen it, so.
Craig? Would you like to?
You were having a side conversation back there, Craig, so...
So, there, there's pros and cons about city of choice. One, it has been in use for, I'm not gonna say since before there was dirt, but dirt was new at the time.
Gotcha.
And the advantage of keeping that is, it signals to the community that some things haven't changed.
Fair enough.
Yeah. Likewise, it's, the bad news is, it signals to the community that some things haven't changed. And, you know, council, I don't hear any of you saying, we're trying, we're, we're going out there trying to offend people. So we're not gonna say the city of no choice, right? But you don't have to feel wed to that word if it's time to change it. And there is something in, remember I, I mentioned earlier on, change doesn't fail because of bad change management, it fails because of faulty change leadership. Part of change leadership is setting and establishing the context. So from that perspective, if you're looking for contextual change, finding a different way of saying the city of choice, is not a bad thing. So, let, let's stop with there. Do any of you feel strongly one way or the other around city of choice?
I, I, I actually, I, I don't. But Craig was picking up the microphone, so he was dying to say something.
Billy was trying to hand it to me, I didn't ask for it.
But what is your opinion, since you're one that uses it?
I guess my perspective is a bit different from some staff in the sense that I go to trade, trade shows a lot. I collaborate with other communities, other regions, and, and travel, you know, whatnot. And city of choice is a common phrase, as is live, work, and play. Those aren't unique. So if, if there's a, an opportunity to be unique, these aren't the phrases to be unique. However, if they do resonate with the community, then I think there's merit.
Okay.
Any other reactions?
I'm indifferent either way, but I guess if we're just looking to resonate with the citizens, I mean, it's, it's simple. They understand it, it's where I live, work, and play. I mean, it's, nothing gets much simpler than that, so.
And leave it alone?
Yeah.
Cause we already changed the, the mission dramatically.
Right. Yeah, I mean, you could, you could say for right now... So you ready? That, we're good. But you do wanna strike out those three bullet items?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think so, they're a little cluttered.
Now, staff, we're here. Let's talk about...
Really quick.
Yes.
So I guess I do have an opinion on this, real quick. We are surrounded by, I think, three cities that that's their tagline. No, the city of choice to live, work, and play.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I'm just saying like, man, we're gonna, now we're just one big region.
Were we first?
Of the same tagline.
Cause we'll soon, no, I'm just kidding.
So, now, like, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna die on a hill on any of this stuff. I'm just saying, if we're gonna stick to this, I'm like, okay, well, there's literally three cities that touch us that say the same. That's our tagline, so, that's all I'm saying.
Well, like Randy said before, I mean, some cities and, you know, businesses spend months and months, you know, hashing this stuff out. So let's not try to create something down in fifteen minutes, yeah.
Yeah.
But to, to the extent that if you said that you wanted something other than that, there is something here that we can go back and play with and bring back to you for consideration. If, if there's a desire to move off of this now. If there's not a desire to move off of this now, it can be something that in six months... By, by the way, typically, this city has had this meeting in January, February. And the reason they didn't do it, you didn't do it last January, February, which was kind of the time, was because we looked around and said, there are four seats open at this point. Four seats are gonna come up for election. And so it would be irresponsible to say for the exiting council to go do this work in January, February, and go, hey, you just got elected, congratulations, here's what you get. So, I mean, it was coming from a good place that we moved this to the summer months for this time. But typically, Paulette said this is the start of the budget time. So typically, this happens in January, February, and that starts to inform budget preparation for the next year, which actually, in cities, begins in, no later than February.
Well, I was gonna say, you just probably confused all the directors, because they've actually been working on their budget since like December. But it's the start of the process for the council, really, so.
Right. So, uh, so you will have an opportunity to, to take another bite at this. If you would like to pursue it now, we'll bring you some things. If you would like to spend the next several months articulating something, and then bringing that to you in six months, uh, this would be one of those directional issues, more than anything else at this point. Susan?
So, you know, the vision says it's supposed to be something that, you know, out there, you know, out there. And this is fine, you know, we've had it for a long time. But I looked, I looked one, one, I looked some up. And this would not be here local, because this one is in Dundine, New Zealand. And their tagline is, "It's all right here."
A place to be.
Hey!
Hey.
Amen!
Yeah, it, by the way, I know where that is.
Yeah?
And the answer would be, it's all right here if you can get here.
But there, you know, there's, you know, like Vegas has what's happened in the Vegas states in Vegas, you know, those are things...
I, I don't want you to think of this as a tagline.
We don't have to have a tagline, it's a vision.
Right.
And it can be sort of, it doesn't have to be flashy. It can be just, this is what we are, because this is what our vision is.
And this is what we aspire to be.
Yeah.
Now, you, there's something that says, we aspire to be the city of choice. You, and, and that's fine. Or you go back to, we aspire to be a vibrant city for people and businesses, that. That was another way of saying it. But we aspire to be an active community, unique, an active, unique community with vibrant economy. So, you know, again, if, council, we can work on this, staff can work on this and bring you something with your, considering all your feedback, if that's your preference, or we can work on it today.
I'd recommend holding off and letting, you know, staff can look at it, we can think about it, and then when we get back together in January, which is only like six months away, we can take a note, bite at it. Just my thought.
Second.
Well, since we can't vote, otherwise Alicia's gonna kill me.
Don't, don't get me started on the voting stuff, please.
Yeah, yeah. So what, what I would look is that, you know, some nods of heads, yea or nay, just that, okay, so I got...
Is it, is it standing pat without, and, and moving forward here with this idea with getting rid of the bullets as the...
Right.
It's one we all agree to, okay.
Yes, we all agree to that. Everyone, I saw everyone doing that. I just didn't know if you wanted to go further or not, and it sounds like you'd like to see something.
Yeah.
And so, staff, we can work on, we've got feedback now, we can work on them.
That's good, I like that.
Hear me out. We got rid of all that. I know why I'm so stuck on live, work, and play, only because like every city in Tri- County has it. Like this sentence, the city of choice for people and businesses, and for people and businesses, and that's like the placeholder for the time being.
I like the original idea, we're gonna let staff go get some, and come back to us with some.
I mean, they are gonna do that, I'm just saying, we're doing all that. All I'm doing is striking the live, work, and play with kinda just the end of this sentence on this little board.
I think you need to learn to get along.
I think you need to learn to get along.
Whoops. And right now, I think we can, we can own this. Each one of us can go out there, if someone says, "Explain it to me," I think every one of us here can explain that to a new person coming in. Tell me why this is the best place to live, work, and play.
Until you get something better. And, and again...
Till HGO.
Of, of those three, I'm curious, of those three, which ones do we do best? Have you had to rank how we do right now on those three?
Play.
Play.
Place first.
Oh, well...
Kind of the whole day of not living is not really taking advantage of anything other than...
Well, lift kinda goes, it's safe, it's convenient, it's whatever, so you do okay there.
Yeah.
I mean, most of the gap that I've heard is around business.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And some of the living stuff of convenience of, and... Okay.
It doesn't have the word best in it, but...
Yeah.
It could be better.
It could be better. Several years ago, these two guys wrote a book called The Discipline of Market Leaders. And this will be a very directional conversation. The Discipline of Market Leaders was, um, these two guys were also very instrumental in, um, the whole, the whole notion of reorganizing, reinventing the, the business. It sort of got into, everybody started with cost cutting, it really wasn't, but it's one of those bestsellers that got hijacked along the way. But they, they came up with an idea that said, from a strategy standpoint, how you win is important. And the best market leaders in every business have an approach to the way they do business that sets them apart in the marketplace. So mayor, if you look at your division of United, what set you apart in the marketplace was cost of doing business with us versus value given.
And understanding the market.
Yeah, but it was part of, that was sort of, you, we were the best value, if I'm hearing, if I heard you correctly. We were the best value. It, so, there, there's been a lot of work historically around strategy. Michael Porter started this work with, years and years and years ago, and he, he brought it. There's other people that have brought it. But these guys have a very easy to understand matrix that says, we create value in one of three ways. We are the best total cost, we are the best product, we are the best total solution. Now, the best total cost means that you focus on operational excellence, that we provide, we, we are the best total cost, not just cost of acquisition, but cost of ownership, cost of everything from a business standpoint. So, Southwest Airlines, for example, was a best total cost, historically best total cost airline, even though other people have said, we do fares cheaper, but still, best total cost, okay, bags fly free, those things, it's part of the best total cost environment. Best product means product leadership. We have a product that, that we're out there, we have, our products are the best product. You know, an example of that in the marketplace is going to be a product leadership, could be like a, a Samsung, or maybe potentially an Apple. Although Apple tends to go over into this best total, best total solution. But they have product leadership. The best total solution is customer intimacy. We know our customers better than anything, anyone else. We are connected to our customers in a way that's very different than our competitors. If you think about, um, how that gets played out, I'll give you three car dealerships in the North Texas area. One is Clay Cooley. What's Clay Cooley selling?
Himself.
Well, that too, but his company, you look at his flow, he's, he's selling cost, right? Shop me first, shop me last, either way, comes he playing, right? It's very catchy. Uh, at the other end of the spectrum, um, you've got Sewell. What's Sewell selling? Customer service and intimacy. You have someone like, oh, what's the name? Let's look at Huffines, for example. What's Huffines selling?
Availability of product.
Availability of product. What are we selling? Are we selling, we're the best operationally efficient place? Are we the best customer intimacy place? Or is our, the product we offer, you know, if we offer it, we do it better than anyone else? People make a choice to live here, work, and work and play here, what are they buying?
I'm gonna say customer intimacy. That's the total solution. Just throwing that out there.
I don't think the operational excellence, I think we can say it's, that's not the case right now. I think it's probably what we're gonna be driving to. And his best product, I think you say the product is, hey, where are you gonna live at? You know, you compare Hurst to North Richardson Hills, I mean, so I, I don't know, I'd say product are our customer, I guess.
So if you think about best product, another way of thinking about that might be best value. So we are, and to your point, there is that, you know, tax burden versus quality of service. All things considered, we're the best value. That would be another way of thinking about best product, is the best value.
I, I kinda go with the, the whole, you know, what's the top three things for a successful restaurant? Location, location, location. I believe that we have a, a, an indisputable good location within the entire metroplex, one. And location to getting to the airport, which a lot of people thrive off of for utilization, and you're far enough away, you know, still begs the question sometimes for me, is Ulysses and Grapevine, you know, I, I mean, when they switch the flight patterns, we have occasional flight over here, people kinda went crazy, and I wanna go, go live in Ulysses or Grapevine, and you get to, you know, do the pause all the time, you know, with a jet going over at a low, even lower altitude than it is there. So I, I really think that, I think the best thing we have is the location, location, location of, of the product we're selling. And as witnessed by what we responded and the customer surveys, our feelings about two, two key elements, which is the, the parks and the laboratory, both. I think those are, I think those are important elements that I think also kinda go ahead and create stickiness, and people wanna stay here for, for those kinds of things, right?
Can I chime in here? I think our, our, it's the best service. In, in any of our business, businesses that we operate, cities are about service. So, um, even though, yes, we have some room for improvement in some oper, in some operational areas, the product we're selling is service on every, in every department, so that's just my two cents.
What was the question?
Which one, are we product, customer intimacy, or, or, uh...
Just where does our city stand?
Yeah, where do you want it to stand?
I, I, I would, I mean, I would say we're probably, uh, in the mid, like, if I were to put a dot, I don't know what the chart's called, but if you put a dot, we're more in the middle, and I would say maybe slightly more toward, um, I don't know which is the, the right one. Better value, not necessarily the lowest cost, but not... maybe slightly more toward, um, I don't know which is the, the right one, better value, not necessarily the lowest cost, but not, not unreasonable cost for what you're giving. So, I think we're somewhere close to the middle, if that makes sense. Maybe that's the bottom right one. I just don't get the chart.
So here's some examples in cities and how this works. In Capel, Texas, if you forget to leave, if, if, if you leave the house and say, I'm not sure if I closed my garage door or not. And you don't have an app on your phone that does it, or an automatic thing that does it, but if you call the city and said, I'm not sure, they'll, they'll dispatch a police officer to go make sure your door, your, your garage door is closed.
We do.
Now. Right, but they, I mean, that's what, that's what they do.
How do they track down telephones?
In Addison, Texas, they had a situation where a resident called City Hall and said, I'm, I, I have to change the pool heater on my pool. And I got it disconnected and I took a piece of fence down to pull it out and I can't get it now outside through the fence. Can someone from the city staff come over and help me move my pool heater? And they said, you know, it will be after lunch, on the way back out, the crew will stop by and if it's safe for them and for your property, they will help you. And it was, they just lifted it up and over and out into the alley. That is a full-service customer experience. So, Paulette, I don't know that we would do those things here.
I, I, I'll say this, though, we have multi-generational people, they've lived here for a really long time, they actually have friends. Right. And, and both of those communities that you mentioned are highly transient from a standpoint of, from out-of-towners, so they don't have a lot of family and friends around like we do. We would never think of calling the city or the police to do that because I've got, you know, twenty people I can call to come do it.
Right. Yeah, now, let, let me give you, because, um, in, in that area where Capel and Addison both are, they share a dispatch center with two other cities, Carrollton and Farmers Branch. And when they were setting up the protocols for the dispatch center, they said, alright, if somebody calls the dispatch center asking for, hey, I've got this help around my garage door, in these, we want you to do this. And when they called and asked Carrollton to say, what do you want us to do? What do you suspect their response was? You're smiling. What do you expect your response was? No, no. In fact, one of the comments, they didn't actually say this, but one of the comments was, please tell them that if they will, when they get home, please check to make sure nothing was stolen. If something was, call us and we'll come collect a police report. Because, now, it's not that they're being mean people, they're not. It's just, they have in those other areas, a relatively small geographic area, they have, and, and they're, you know, Carrollton's got a hundred and thirty thousand people and large geography, and they don't, they just don't have a staff to do it. So they, it's not they're being mean, it's just that they're being practical. And they look at it and said, for us to provide that level of customer intimacy costs us more than our residents would be willing to pay in tax rate.
Absolutely. But it, it goes back to, but me saying what I did is that, this is, this is what raised the ire of so many people that apartments don't foster what this community's always been. And I can, look, I get it, they, you know, everybody approved it on the, everybody that paid attention approved it on the twenty thirty vision, but once they started seeing it, they didn't like it. And they have the right to change their mind, which is what they did after last election. They changed their mind.
Sure.
And said, we don't want, um, it's not our responsibility from a regional perspective to house all the people that are deciding to move into our area. It can be someone else's responsibility. I mean, that's what they did. We've got friends, we've got family, we've, that's, that's what this community's been built on for so long that it seemingly was the shift or attempted shift away from that and people didn't want it anymore. So.
I would contend that where you sit is probably closer to right here. You're the best value for the dollar, for the amount spent. You have high level of service, and you do. People are friendly and nice and cost, and do well, you do. But Paulette, I mean, you said, all cities provide a service, you're, that's true. But I promise you, the service that I would get if I lived here would be different than the service I would get if I lived in the city of Dallas. Right? I can actually call and get somebody on the phone here. I can get, right, and, but aren't you in the service business? It's just like, ye- years ago, in, in another community, one of the council members was a pilot for American Airlines. And this was back when American Airlines had the slogan, we know why you fly. Remember that? And this pilot said, the joke among the pilots at the time was, we know why you fly, we just don't care. So, yeah, we still provide a service. I'm gonna suggest, though, that what I'm hearing you say, and I think this is important guidance for staff, even though you're talking about efficiency audits and becoming more efficient, being more physically responsible, you're not saying we're going to be, that we're, you're not going to the lowest cost provided. Am I hearing that correctly? Likewise, you're not saying we're gonna be the Nordstroms of cities. Does that make sense? Good.
Anyway, the purpose of that exercise, I mean, we should be dead center in between really kind of all three of those. And it's a three-legged stool and we should, you know, kinda manage all those items.
Yeah, you know, maybe, although I think choosing one, I mean, the whole, the whole purpose of that book, the whole premise of the, the idea is that, yeah, you, you want operational excellence and you wanna be, but you gotta have, you gotta lead with one thing. You can't lead with all three. Disney leads with the way they treat customers. But that's historically how they've led. Nike leads with product innovation and leadership. I'm still trying to figure out what Tesla leads with, but I don't hate, I'm just trying to figure, I haven't figured it out yet. Because to me, they're selling a technology, they're not selling cars. Right. One of my very favorite quotes from a guy named Roger Von Eck, wrote a book several years ago called A Whack on the Side of the Head. Truth is all around us, what matters is where we put our focus. Several years ago, you talked about how you wanted the community, the council talked about how they wanted the community to look actually in twenty twenty-five, so that's close. Several of you commented on this. You don't know what forward-thinking means, we'll talk about that one. Not that we've done these things, but that we're always there, but that this is what we would aspire to be. Let's talk about forward-thinking. And Paulette, help me out here, and staff, help me out. My recollection around that is that we wanted to be, and forward-thinking is another way of saying future-focused. We wanted to be moving toward where communities and people are going to be. That's a future-focused. Now, at the time, future-focused meant transit-oriented development was part of the future focus. That was the focus of the time because text dot and rail and all that was coming in with everything. Future focus was that. Future focus was fewer people will be living in, you know, more and more people will be wanting to live in multi-family, higher-density environments. Future focus would be that we are, the community, population is aging. Now, that may be not true now, but at the time, it was, population was aging. We're not getting the influx always of younger people. Sort of the good news is that you've done, you've done a great job of, of keeping, having people love to live here. The bad news is, is when their kids leave and now they're, you know, they don't leave, which kinda ties up a house for somebody who would want to move in. So, it's kinda the good news and bad news. But that was sort of focused on where the, the world is moving was the idea around that. Focus on what does the community need to be in the future? Technology, transportation, all of that. It was all thrown into that. But aside from that one thing, are these still things that you would look at it and go, maybe not in twenty twenty-five, but we would still aspire to be these things?
I'm gonna use one, feel like a community welcoming. I'm in a, you, what I call a unique neighborhood in Diamond Lock. And I, I'll give you an example, somebody, we talked about the police department going out a while ago. First thing hit my brain was, I left the, I was filling my swimming pool up last night with water, left it on. Text my neighbor, he's already been over and turned it off now. Of course, it's probably running down the street by now, but in the past, public works, uh, if we have a broken pipe or something like that and the meter's running, public works will actually stop at the house and say, hey, we're showing your meters running, which to me is a great service from, with inside the city. And that's, that's where your community and that's where the extra service the city provides, as well as being able to depend on your neighbors. And that's a uniqueness you find in North Richardson Hills.
So you guys, do you wanna keep forward-thinking in there? Does it matter?
You know, it depends on how you define it. I think forward-thinking is, is good if we're, you know, when I think in this context about forward-thinking, I'm thinking of interest rates and was that due to our debt service capabilities? And so strategically, how are we applying forward-thinking to our financial state, um, or maybe our efficiency and that sort of thing? So, that, those words aren't in forward-thinking, but that's what I'm thinking about.
Just, yeah, I'll just add, add on to that. See, Blake, we actually do agree on a lot. I mean, I think we've established that before, because when we have conversations. No, that, and that's, that's what we see future and forward-thinking as, um, because, yes, it's about looking at the interest rates and, and our debt capacity and infrastructure with an eye to what are the demands that are coming? Not, not what we have now. So, um, and so that's, that's why forward-thinking is important. And, and, and in moving the organization in a, in a way that we're gonna measure more, we're gonna assess our data more, we're gonna know whether we're providing what's being demanded in an efficient way. Part of that is to do the data analysis to see trends of what's coming, so that we can be better prepared for it, future-thinking budget, you know. So one of the things, for example, a, a bond election, the, the previous council, and I think this council's interested in planning for a bond election soon because of our additional street needs, which we presented to you all, um, and other facilities needs, and, and we'll have to look with an eye to the future on that as well. Not just what we see now, but what building for the future. So that's just an example.
Good.
So I'll throw out forward-thinking really quick, because I'm the one that finds it insulting. But Eamon Carter built an airport right out in the middle between Dallas-Foot Worth, and he spent a lot of his own personal money and, on the land, and then made a lot of it back when the airport bought a lot of it, uh, to be built. It failed because you couldn't get Dallas interested, right, because they had a lot of field. And there wasn't as great a demand, but he was way ahead. Sometimes you can be too far ahead. I, I'll say this, and, you know, I know I'll get criticism at some point, but, um, and that is, the, uh, train stops. Sounds really great. There's, there's no study ever been put together that those pay for themselves, ever. And HOV lanes do, and express lanes do, which is where this state actually headed in a dramatic fashion for a really long time. COVID actually changed a lot of everything, right? And one of those is, is my kids will never get on that public transportation. It's just not of interest to them at all. Because they're gonna work from home. The idea, and I, I heard Oscar do a speech, um, right after a guy named Nathan Chandler posted something about how much it was costing per ride. And he did a speech, just did a luncheon deal, just to kinda cover the, that it was still a good idea. And it was, um, the, the ridership still isn't there, by the way. But to, ju- just to cover the idea of why it was still a good idea, the reality is with COVID, sending everybody home, the idea of public transportation and his position was, is that if you can, if you can go live here and go somewhere else for a job, like up in Plano. So, Plano was actually his example, which was interesting, because I tried to ride the train up to my office in Plano one time, and it took me just at two and a half hours, uh, to get there, because you had to change trains twice and go all the way into Union Station downtown Dallas, and then get on another one, go back up, and then get on a bus, so you waited for it and go over to the place if you're not. And we were on a bus route only like a half a dozen stops away from the train. My kids are like, no, that's never happening. So it was a good forward-thinking that where we were at the time, and then all of a sudden, it just got cut off, right? Because COVID sent jobs home again. That changed the whole dynamic of the workforce, which is why I feel like, instead of financial, everybody has switched to where they live based on social, not on financial. Uh, and once that happened, I think we can, I think we, I think we compete with Granbury now, uh, versus, we never competed with Granbury before. You know, forgetting people, their, their problem is, you know, um, internet infrastructure that they need, that they're gaining, right? And I only use that just because I'm familiar with Granbury a little more.
Granbury was, but that's a great example. People are moving to Granbury for that exact reason.
And it's growing really fast and, and my property taxes are going up down there. Um, and because of it, because it's driving up the values. So, I, I think that's, that's where we get ourselves a little bit in trouble, because no one knows the future and no one knows how to be, what disruptor is gonna come along. The great idea of all great ideas in nineteen seventy-two was, oh, Northeast Mall, right? And it was coming in, coming by seventy-five, I think. No, seventy-two. No, it came in seventy-two, didn't it? It wasn't, oh, sorry. Thank you. It was North Hills Mall that actually came in in seventy-eight, right? So it was seventy-two that was Northeast Mall. And now, I mean, they've struggled with Northeast Mall just to keep it full. And if you've been into some of the shops that are in there now, that used to be where Nordstrom's was, it's not Nordstrom's. And, and it's kinda discounting down, and I think it's why Hearst now has the highest tax rate of anyone in, in Northeast Orange County. Because that, the future was great then for that. It's not great now. They wish that was a Amazon distribution center instead. So, that's where I don't like those kinds of, I want the characteristic of someone I want to move here to be forward-thinking. Nope. I want them to just want to be here and pay their bills and be a productive member of society. Uh, so, anyway.
What were these characteristics for, again?
We got into this in the past is because as part of the vision, they wanted some more qualifiers.
Qualifiers for who?
For the city to look at and how we wanted to see ourselves and how we wanted to focus our activity and our, our activity and attention and resources. Now, the forward-thinking to your point, maybe it's future-focused, maybe it's being more anticipatory and flexible is, you know, what you're looking for. But it was guidance to the city and, and to the staff especially. And, you know, these things get reflected back into some of the goals and priorities. So this again is a qualifier. By the way, you can toss all this out if you want. But, again, in the past, you, the reason I'm covering it is because it has been part of your plan in the past.
Really quick, so, because in the survey, it made it sound like, this is my characteristic of the citizen I want here.
Well, there's this piece of it, that's the target population.
Yeah, so now we're talking about, it's our characteristics of us?
Yeah, the organization, yeah, and how we want the community, the organization to be.
Oh, I mean, that's still like, if I could pick my citizen, that's what's still sounding. Hey, I, I'm saying it two different ways.
I took this as the government, like what we want the government operation to be. I took this as the government, like what we want the government operation to be.
Right, this is sort of forward thinking. And this is, um, who we saw as our target customer. The realization that, that led to this was this idea that we're not a place that everybody doesn't fit here.
Right.
And so who do, who fits here? Interesting that couple of discrepancies that pop out of this. Council said we're primarily single-family homes with pockets of other types of housing. And yet, the message that you all clearly heard from residents is, single-family homes no longer matter. That's kind of the.
No, from a growth directional perspective.
From a directional.
That's what, that's what's seen, because our, our, our percentage of concentration of apartments exceeds anybody else around here. Yes.
Yeah, yes, right. But man, I think the thing that comes out here is that value being part of a community, be good neighbors. I think that's still part of who we want, who we attract. Single-family homes, yes. Ordinary, ordinary is not, but they're, yeah, good people with conservative lifestyle and traditional values.
Well, we got ordinary.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
We are not Seattle.
We're not Seattle.
Okay, nice.
We're not even Austin.
No offense to Seattle.
Yeah, we're not even Austin.
We wanna be Austin.
Right, uh, active lifestyles, great place to raise a family, progressive, value quality education, convenience, value service. That's who our sort of target of everything that we're going after is.
What's that progressive in there?
I, I use their insurance, but that's about it.
That, that was back, that was back when progressive was a dirty word.
So I, from, from a tool perspective, what do we use this for?
Great question.
What, what does somebody, what do, what do we do with that? I mean, you know, once somebody's buying a, do we tell all the real estate agents, here, here's the list, don't sell the house to people that don't fit this? It just seemed, I, I don't know, I read the whole thing and it just seemed really odd to me reading it. Uh, and I was like going, what do I do with it? I mean, I spent this time putting it together, there's a big bullet list and yippee hoo, hooray, right? But, but what am I doing with it? What, what, what does this guide any of my principles?
This came out with, the, the whole question of city of choice for live, to live, work and play, all right? For who to live, work and play? And that was designed, this list was designed to answer that question of to who are we the city of choice?
When was this put together?
Do you remember?
Ten, twelve years ago.
Does it guide me in something?
Yeah, I mean, if it's not, if there's no value added to this, then what's the point of having it?
Yeah, and that's the only thing I vaguely remember about when we did this list was that it was trying to get to, okay, if, if these are the, if this is the population we want to identify, what are the things we need to be doing? You know, it was kind of like along those lines.
Well, I understand, but I still feel like, like, oh, I'm gonna pick that person over this person. Like, I can't stop someone from moving here. That's what it sounds like this is for.
And I've already defined who I want to be, so they can see the product that's out there. I'm not out there reaching out to them and going, I'm gonna market to these people to buy homes here. Right, you know what I mean? I, I, I'm struggling with the idea, I don't know how to execute with this list, is what is my problem, I guess.
We can toss her. Sweet. Interestingly enough, just to let you know. We're about an hour and a half ahead of the schedule. Now.
That's efficiency.
Here's, so here, here would be my question. Would you rather work longer today and shorter tomorrow? Or are you sort of brain fried today and you need to take a break from it? You know, because if we get further today, that means tomorrow, we probably aren't gonna go to four thirty.
I'm, I'm already here.
Okay.
And, and we can adjourn?
Yeah. Good, Tito, just to let you know, this is. This is where we are. But we're gonna keep going. So, um. You think about it, our mission defines our purpose, vision is where we're going, the goals become the big ideas of how we get there. Now, city goals, cities typically operate with a different type of strategic goals than businesses do. I know business, I've got, my strategic goal is, I've gotta earn this much revenue, I have this revenue target this year. I need this EBITDA number this year. I need this, you know, that becomes a very, very specific target. Um, which by the way, some cities sort of move in that direction. Most don't, however. Most sort of look at big targets that are always out there that we, that we're continuing to work toward because they're ongoing. So first off, understand that that's part of the difference between what, what you see versus, especially if you come at it from a private sector perspective. Now, the other thing is, you have set nine. I'm gonna show you some examples where five or six are probably closer to a, a better number and more manageable. But with this in mind, this is the starting point. Okay, so we're gonna talk a little process here for a second. That's the starting point. Typically, we look at goals or guiding principles and customer, which in our case would be resident and business. Operational, be more effective and efficient. Talent, financial and culture. Sort of five big areas. Here's how that gets played out. Here's some examples. These are my friends in St. George again. These became their five big goals that focus all the time. Number one, be great at the basics. Deliver exceptional experiences, support and sustain a strong economy, encourage community and connection, maintain financial strength and sustain organizational excellence. Five big areas that all their priorities go to that. They all roll up into that. So that's the way they did it. Mansfield did something very similar, except they took it a step further and recrafted theirs into something they called True North. But same, same ideas, right? You'd be, took everything that they'd set as gold and they would all fall into one of these. Now, Mansfield started, did something similar, but they created theirs as a beacon. And so now we're back to this. Let's start with a, let's start with a basic question. Do you want nine or do you want less?
We always capped at seven. We said, get really truly focused on about three or four, but we, we said, we're, we're definitely not going over seven. Uh, but nine seems to be a rather lengthy list.
I don't think local and regional leadership needs to be a goal of the city. Like, it's a tool, I get it, you know, integration, but it doesn't need to be a goal. That's an easy one, throw it out. Can we go back and look at the other?
Sure. That was because their experiences, they are focusing, they're focusing on, um, they do a lot of events. They're trying to really focus, emphasize the events that they do in the community. Uh, they do a handful, like four, five, six sort of big events, and then they do community events all the time. They do like forty, forty community events a year, forty or fifty community events a year. They do a lot of community events. And they're gonna do more once they get their library built.
Do, do any cities have more quantitative goals? So like, or measurable goals, I guess I would say? How do you measure some of this stuff?
Yeah, so historically, cities look at it this way, is that from these, I'll give you an example. In safety and security in 2022, the, the goal was safety and security, enhance safety and security. The objectives came down to these things. Response rate, crime rate, efficiency. Some of them are activities, community and public safety programs. Respond to large-scale emergencies, partner with communities to support modern law enforcement efforts. Chief and chief, those are basically still the ones, right? I got those right? Good. Uh, so the goal became, we want to promote safety and security, enhance safety and security. The objectives become, these are the, these are the targets that are measurable, that you can focus on. We can only measure, we can measure three things, activities, results and perceptions. Any measurement falls into one of those categories.
I, I just would, I mean, I, yes, I agree. I just wanted, I wish maybe we could somehow add that into each of these. I, you know, maintain a low crime rate. Who defines what a low crime rate is? So how do I know if we're meeting that objective or not? That's, that's my only point.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna interject. So what we do with this, so the, the council sets the, the goals and then the objectives under each goal. And this is part of the piece that we take back when we're doing the budget to sh- to, to kind of tie up, or this is the way we've done it before. Uh, what leads into each of those goals and objectives. But also, y'all will get to the next probably stage of this, which is setting the, some, some of your own overall, uh, uh, not object, maybe task, policy directives that would fall under these. Did that make sense? Yeah.
It's only, it's only been somewhere.
Right, I, I do think that it, it would be good to have it be more specific and defined in some areas. But, but also part of that's what we do when we're looking at the budget.
So for example, here's where you could make a shift. You could say from being safety and security, we could say to be the safest community in Tarrant County.
Yeah, I think it's just the word goal. When I think go, I think like smart go, I think measurable.
Target.
Yeah, exactly. So that's what's throwing me off.
So again, I've even, there, there are even some communities that a couple of them have said, um, these aren't goals. These are focus areas for the operation of things we want to achieve. And these actually, the objectives become the goals. So that's another way of thinking about it. So again, some of this is structural, but also from guidance for your staff at this point, before we started going down into the basics. Um, when you report out on these, you report, here's the safety and security. Here is our response time. And we report out response time. Now, you, as I recall, you also report out what's this response time compared to other cities around you. Right. Right. So it is there. So I guess from my standpoint now, one of the questions would be, do you want to stick with more? These are the, these are the big things we want to achieve, like being great at the basics. And then we can measure what that looks like. Or do you want to go sort of skip that and move more toward, let's have some targets?
I guess my only thought is when, like, good at the basics, that, that's great. I actually like that, that term. But when I have always looked at strategic plans, so each of the, each of the vice presidents over certain areas that reported up to me, right? Back to the basics goes across those versus a strategic initiative that we would have would be focused on one, like that vice president would be the, the, the champion, if you will, or the executive in charge or the whatever stakeholder, lead stakeholder, whatever term you want to use for that next step. And then not one that goes like across all of them necessarily, unless the, well, just in this case, the city manager was the owner of it. And what does that, and what does that mean? I, I don't know, that gets a little too generic for me on a strategic plan level.
Right. Now, if you think about the goals really, I mean, the strategy is where we're headed, the goals is how we get there. What, what do we have to do to get there? So you can say, being great at the basics is a way, we have to get that right, whatever that is. And that, by the way, that means you don't have to talk about infrastructure, streets and water and sewer and fire and safety, all, that's all the basics, right? That's all basics. We gotta be great at all those things. So that is, that's how we win. I mean, the strategy really is how we win in the marketplace toward, and winning is achieving a vision.
Uh, the, the, the kind of thing you're talking about, Mayor, is, um, that's, that's kind of, so the council has typically just set the overall broad goals, objectives. And then at the staff level, we make those kind of assignments. You own this or, or we will. I, I think we have kind of gotten away from that specifically over the last few years, but, but how I, again, with, on the strategic planning level, we take this and then we break it down into further tasks that are assigned to departments.
And the, the way you guys break that down is what would be the measurable
Yes.
pieces
Right.
to see if we meet the higher goals.
Exactly.
So the goals don't necessarily have to be measurable, but what we do to get there will be.
Yes, and then we bring that back to the council to say, okay, here's, and, and say, you know, kind of, do you agree? These are the, this is, these are the tasks to help us improve, you know, response times, for example. And this is who owns it, you know, kind of thing like that, so you, so you all can see. That's what we've done in the past. Like I say, I, I will acknowledge that we did kind of get away from doing it in that much detail the last several years when we brought it back. But we, that's how, I intend to do it, that's how I've done it before.
So if you think about improving response time as an example, that's a good one, because I don't care how low you are, everybody wants a lower one a little bit, right? Nobody says, hey, take longer, however long you are. So if you think about, you know, response time, let's think about all the things that go into lowering response time. Okay, one, it's location, like in the fire departments, it's location, how far is the station from the place I have to get to? All right, so that's something, but that alone is not there. So you've got then, what's the, the time to roll out from the time the call comes in until it rolls? That's a measurable number. But you also have the dispatch time, right? How long it takes dispatch to get there? But then we also have traffic signal synchronization in there so that we can get, and traffic, traffic has an impact, right, chief? So traffic has an impact on it. Staffing has an impact on it. I mean, training has an impact on, I mean, there's like all these things that go in there. So, you know, who owns that? Well, a lot of different people own different pieces, but with a goal of, it's like maintaining low crime rate. Believe it or not, Parks and Rec has a, has a role in maintaining low crime rate. Sounds somewhat counterintuitive, but they do, right? Because if you have kids in a program at night in an act, rec center somewhere, and they're all there in one place, that means they aren't where. and they're all there in one place, that means they aren't where. So, you know.
Yeah.
So, I mean, even that has an impact on things. So, some of these become multifaceted. And, and so it really does, and by the way, I think staff is comfortable, I know I'm comfortable, it's sort of what works best for you, council, to look at this in a way that works for you. And way that works for you for understanding it, and a way that works for you for creating the focus that you want. For example, you could say, these are the five things we wanna focus on in the next year. We wanna focus on streets. We wanna focus on financials. We wanna focus on this, you know, whatever that might be. Everything else, guys, just keep doing what you're doing. By the way, in your business, that's probably what you did. You had four or five areas of focus, and oh, by the way, you still have to answer the phone and pay the bills and... Right. Now, the, the reason, so there's another reason though, to come back and say, even if you said there's four or five things you wanna focus on, there's a reason to say, optimize financial strength. And it's mostly because these are gonna, public's gonna, those that look at this, and sometimes they wanna see safety and security and operational financial strength and operational excellence. They wanna see that as something that's important. So. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Well, I, some of the things that I, I think, you know, if we can kinda wrap it into a new five categories, and whatever it is, figure it out, but, you know, something like driving efficiency, I think is a good idea, or improving infrastructure, the things that you just kinda mentioned, right? As kinda the broad categories of where we wanna focus. Something I'd like to see is, is maybe, I don't know how to word it, but like removing barriers to doing business, or, or kinda emphasizing that as a goal. What are we doing to make it easier to do business here? Maybe that's incentives, maybe that's regulations changing or removing. That could be the same thing on the development side, you know, I, I don't know. Also, I think maybe, it, it, I don't know if it's appropriate, but is there something we should do here that's more internal looking, like culture, you know, setting some sort of goal for creating a thriving culture within the, the city of N R H, the, the government, I'm sorry, the community organization that...
It's all right.
You know what I mean? Yeah, but I mean, if, if recruiting and retention is a, is a, a main issue that we're dealing with, then maybe that should be some sort of goal, and how are we addressing it? Not calling it government, but calling it family, for instance, could be.
Our city family. Just like they took, called kids in school now scholars. That was, yeah.
By the way, there's very few things I would push back on you on, if y'all said you wanted to do this, but thinking about the concept of family, I, I will tell you, that's not something I would advise. Only from the standpoint of, I don't know that any of you here would go to your, call a family meeting tomorrow night and say, hey, it's a tough quarter, I'm gonna have to let three of you go.
Was that on option? I missed out.
So, I mean, right, so, but I do think so.
Goes against driving efficiency, we'll say.
Right.
Counterproductive. What happened to you? If we go back to our mission though, it's quality of life, fiscal responsibility, business friendly, resident, or community focused, so, I mean, should make sure those all fit underneath there, which they, which I think they easily do.
Thank you very much. In the meantime, he'll come and do this.
You were, you were.
All right, now I'm recording again. You're popping my back. So that would be an option, to do that. There ought to be something around customers or citizens. Here you go, can we take, can we give you this one? Thank you very much. There probably ought to be something around citizens.
Citizens.
So, I mean, being business friendly is an idea. I'm curious, how do you want your residents? What's the goal for residents?
What do you mean?
So, are we resident friendly? Are we resident?
You know, it, it's back to what I was saying before, and that is, people, people don't live places as much for financial, but for social. I mean, it's not a mistake of who moves out of California into Texas for a reason, right? That's a social reason. Not a financial rea, well, somebody gets to be financial after this, like, it's so oppressive, but we have to be a place that attracts people that want to come here, that want, basically wanna work from home here, and there's other reasons to be here, right?
What I feel like I've heard in terms of residents is more engagement. So, I don't know if that's part of what you wanna make your goal, but making sure that, you know, resident, I'm not gonna use, not gonna use citizens, just like Blake's trying not to use government, I'm trying not to use citizens. Resident engagement is what I've heard y'all say. And going back to business friendly, I, I liked the term of making it easier to do business, because frankly, you know, we, I don't know how to word this since I'm being recorded, but like I said, we don't incentivize, I'll just put it this way, things that are gonna come anyway. We don't try to recruit things that try to locate on every corner anyway. So, I don't wanna give the impression or have somebody come in and say, well, the council told y'all to be business friendly, and you're not being friendly to my business, you know, that, that kinda thing. And then on culture, I would just say, the council does set the tone for the culture of the overall organization, because we all work in partnership together, that's how it's been, and I, and I'm hopeful that that's how it will continue. We work in partnership with the council. So you set the tone for the culture. But to the, to the point, to the question I was asked earlier about fears of the staff and directors, this is before y'all are here, one of their fears, at least from the general services side of the house, is that that culture will change. And so, I'm just gonna say, there's not a perception among the staff that the internal culture needs to change per se, other than, like I was saying earlier, we have more honest conversations than maybe before. But I'll say the council sets the tone, and then we, and then we carry that forward. And, so one of those things is the values. So years ago, the council set the our spirit values, respect, service productivity, integrity, teamwork, I'm missing one, responsibility. I was looking at Clayton, 'cause he, he can always recite those from memory. So, so those values help set that tone for what the council expects of our culture. And we are kinda going through a process of figuring out how to refresh those and reintegrate those, because to me, we think those really are the core values of a good organization. So, so it might be at some point, y'all think about whether there's some of those that you would tweak, but that, that's kinda how the tone was set for the organization's culture in the past. If that makes sense.
Paul, I just wanna say, I don't want, I don't have any idea on changing the culture or the priorities of the culture, but more, how are we measuring the effectiveness of what we've set out? So, you know, we, we've talked a lot about, you know, metrics that we can use and different surveys. And I, I think the same thing applies to what you were saying, as far as citizen-driven or resident-driven engagement, and like, perhaps there's more ways that we can integrate surveys. I was just talking to Jack, and I think he's talked to you before about, I mean, even when citizens walk out of neighborhood services, maybe there's a way for them to collect feedback as they walk out on that interaction. And so prioritizing this as a goal, I'm more interested in, like, how do we collect the data and get the metrics than changing anything, if that makes sense, so.
Yes. So, thanks for that clarification, but the, so the resident engagement and feedback probably is for the residents and, and for the culture. We did do an employee engagement survey. It's been almost two years now, Mary, I can't remember, but we are about getting ready to gear up with another one. And we'll, I'll share those results with, with the council. This one will ask the same questions that we asked in our previous one, so that we have a accurate comparison, but yeah.
And I think that's, in my opening remarks, making the comment about the, the residents need to feel more like customers when they come here, and I, I related a story to Clayton after one of the council meetings, and it was Carlos Reyes it was in, and, and he, he was on his fifth visit to try to figure out how to re-permit some, he was trying to permit something, what he really needed to do was plat, because he had a piece of property he'd had for a long time, and he's trying to get some stuff done. The person that was speaking to him in the department was very rude to him in the very last time, and he said he prayed about it. He said, I'm driving by, I decided to pray about it and come into the building, because I wanted to find out, you know, I just had to make this last-ditch effort to try to get this done, because, you know, I've been trying to do this construction, some of this house, for a while. And he walked in and, and he asked Mr. Clayton the, the question, and, and Clayton addressed his issue and said, well, actually, I have to replat first. And he says, no one ever told me that. They just kept telling me what I needed to do to get a permit, and then telling me I couldn't get one, and I never understood why. And, and he said, he, he said, we need to keep Clayton, not everybody else, but and, and I just thought, that's, that's not being customer-focused, right? I mean, which is where I think that, that immediate feedback, and, and we talked about it, I said, a simple thing that I go through all the, when I'm in the Philippines, it's very prevalent. I mean, at department level, the, it was at, it's at the bathrooms at the airport, too, the smiley face, the neutral face, and the happy face, right? And you hit one of the buttons on the way out the door, and it gives you a score, and it's, it's kinda the one-minute manager theory, is that it's the immediate feedback that's the most valuable, because it's fresh on your mind. So, I think that is more of the, how do we get, how do we capture when somebody leaves what their feelings were, what their comments were, and, and those kinda things, to get that feedback, to create that you can't optimize what you're doing on a feedback loop if it takes a really long time, right? If, the shorter that feedback time, the more quickly you can address where you are.
So let me ask, because I had a community a few years back that had this as one of their goals. Operate as a service business.
Paul said that's the business they're in, so.
Now, what that meant was, for them, is if we operate as a service business, that means there's an implied, we're gonna make financially, financially-based decisions, as a business would. We're gonna operate as a service business, which says we're in the business of serving people. And it brings a level of, and I, I shared with this, by the way, the city that did this was also the city, one of the cities that has engaged in managed competition. There's a couple of them that have been, but this one was one of the, one of those that have been. But their idea is, we, they wanted to be able to say, I'm not sure how many of you've heard this. You, you go to Rotary, or Lions Club, or whoever else you're, Lions Club, right? How often do you hear, are you Lions Club or Rotary? Both, what? You go there, and I don't know which one of you guys remembers of, but you hear, city government wastes money, private sector can do it better, do it cheaper. Any of you heard that when you go to civic clubs? A few of you have? Sure. Or you go to whoever you're with? Well, he said, I got tired of hearing that. And he said, there's actually no reason that we should hear that. We have, we have a cost advantage. We don't pay taxes, we don't pay sales tax on our products and services. So we have a cost advantage and stuff. We don't have to make a profit. So if you look at a ten to twenty percent profit margin, we ought to be better automatically, 'cause I don't have to make a profit. So, he said, how about if we started evaluating ourselves based upon, are we competitive? Now, that's the ultimate example of that, but it started with this concept of, we're a service business. Now, what does that mean? For how we treat people, how we, you know, our process, we're making it easy, those things. That's an idea for you. Here's what I've heard you say. Operational, I've heard, are you interested more in operational excellence or operational efficiency?
How can you be excellent without being efficient?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
That's true.
Which, that's a chicken and egg, but I think it's efficient, personally.
But you're, but you can be efficient without being excellent.
What are people gonna hear? If I say, I wanna be efficient, people automatically think, oh, he wants to cut off the library, or something like that. No, I just want you to be efficient with the money you're given. And I am okay with spending money on things that we would not consider efficient if that is what we've decided to do, right, and have an open conversation, so I, I don't know.
Yeah. But, by the way, the reason I ask that question is because there are people out there, and here, we all understand that difference, but there are people out there that have, the council said efficiency, it's like, oh, they're getting ready to cut stuff. Excellence is like, you gotta be efficient and effective to be excellent. So, I'm just offering that as a, you know, it can be either. You're gonna focus on efficiency, no doubt about it. Because you can't be excellent without also being efficient.
We had, our customer service, I, I fought the mothership a lot about average handle time on a, on a call. And that's, for those of y'all who follow that, it's, it's how much time do I have a customer on the telephone while I'm talking to them? I had college and university students. I refused to, I, I didn't refuse to measure it, I refused to make it part of the goal set, and saying, I wanna lower that and get down, which was what the rest of United Healthcare did. I also had the lowest, I mean, the highest first call resolution. And so, they didn't get a second call, and I said, if you add those together, I win, right? So, don't, don't make me have people call back. Let me finish it the first time, but don't measure me on the other one. Don't force me to measure, actually, actually, the deal was, you can just fire me before I'm gonna measure on it, is what the deal was, but, and they did, you know, so it's, they left me alone and let me not do average handle time. So, that was excellence over efficiency, but I believed it was more efficiency over excellence, because they didn't have to call me back.
Yeah, so Dell Computer actually found that happen a few years back. They started measuring and targeting average call handling time. And theirs was less, four minutes or less. And guess what? What do you think, what do you think happened? Overall. First off, car handling time hit exactly three fifty-seven, three fifty-eight, three whatever, yeah. Yeah. Call backs, callbacks, callbacks went up. Complaints about dropped calls went up, whatever, went up, right, because people started moving, you know.
You're getting people off the phone.
Yeah, I just gotta get you off the phone. And if I know that I've got this supervisor out there who is gonna, you know, run me up the flagpole if I, if I go over three fifty-seven, you know, but they don't care about how many times they call? So, I, you know, what I'm hearing is, is probably more excellence with focus right now. Right, staff, you get that. There's a focus on efficiency. Overall, we're looking for excellence. Do you wanna list fiscally responsible as something that's important to have out there? I know it's implied in this. Do you need to say it for people to hear it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think absolutely. It's just the fact that we're saying it is like, hey, we're emphasizing this better be a priority for you, and we wanna hear how you're making it a priority. I also like the word steward, I don't know if it's a better word or not, but there you go. Like a good steward.
Official stewardship?
Stewardship.
I like that. By the way, this is the point when I start writing small like this, that I have to remind you, I, I ascribe to the Mark Twain philosophy of spelling. Mark Twain once said, if you only know one way to spell a word, you're not that creative. So.
There you go.
So, I understand what that means. Easy to do business with. I heard that as something's really important.
I, I, it has to be extremely important. I understand we're going to get, dig into, if we're too easy, we're going to have vape shop there. I think if anybody watches this video, they know we don't want vape shops. I think we got that pretty clear. But, I think we need to signal out there that we are focused on business. So, we do have to say, just like we have to say physically responsible. So, it needs to be on the list.
I think residents want to hear, "Easy to do business with too." Like your friend that said, "I didn't know I had to have this platted."
And maybe business friendly is a better way to say that.
I don't, I don't like that.
Why not?
It's too cliche.
Yeah, that's where you kind of go, like, well, then we're for, it's a free for all.
Best for business, how's that?
Well, yeah, I mean, they're best, I think it needs to be written in a way that's like, become easier or be easy to do business, you know, it's, the, the goal is, where we're at is not where we want to be. We want to become better at being a good place to do business. I don't know how you want to say that, but that's my idea.
Well, you could, you could say, "The goal is be easier to do business."
Be easier to do business. So, find out how you're going to do, what you're going to do in your departments to make this easier to do business.
By the way, there's some things that are automatically, because of the nature of what we do, that are going to be more difficult than they would be in the private sector. I did a podcast some months ago with some guys in the fintech world, financial technology stuff. And one of the guys on the podcast was a guy from Australia. And he says, "In Australia, we can set up a bank account from my phone." He said, "'Cause I just did it." On a, during a commercial, so like, two minutes, commercial break, he set up a bank account on his phone from his sofa in less than two minutes. And they put $100 in it. They opened him up, gave him a $100 credit within two minutes. So, easier to do business with.
I think when you talk about easier to do business, we're, we're talking about two different options. One is a business, want to come here to do business. One is our customers, residents.
It's easier to work with us.
Coming to the city to do business.
Right. So, the other one we talked about, instead of saying, "We want a great culture, we want the," how about if you said, "We want to be a great place to work?" Now, there, there is a great place to work competition, which cities can apply for, but just in general, you can say, "We want to be seen as a great place to work." Now, the other part is, this needs to be wordsmithed, but you want to engage residents who think this is a great value. And I'm not sure how to talk about that, but that's one of the things that I heard you say. We want our residents to be engaged and we want them to see us as a great value.
I, I would almost say that that would roll under easier to do business with, because if, if we're trying to get their feedback and provide better service, I mean, you could kind of tie those together, but I don't know. But maybe we want to strip it out so that it is prioritized and, you know, the staff knows this is what.
Yeah, I think they're separate because when you're engaging with the service, we're listening to the citizen, I see it as something different. It's its own unique thing.
Do you like this notion of operating as a service business or not? It can go away really quick if you don't like it. Does it matter?
I'm indifferent, but I don't think it's.
If it doesn't decide, we didn't have it. All right. So, the, the last question though is, what's, so think about what's missing from our focus? If we do this, what's missing? What's missing that you'd want for the citizens and the staff to know, "This is important for us"?
You want to go back to the old ones?
Mm-hmm. I think we're missing a great place to live. We're talking about a great place to work, a great value, you can do business with, but we've, we've left out the, the great place to live.
Is there a certain aspect of that that's popping out to you?
No, just when I looked at the list and thinking about, you know, we also want it to be resident focused, I don't know.
Go ahead.
I don't know, because I like to live here.
Maybe that bottom one? Efficient, effective delivery of services?
No, honestly, I don't know if we have to figure that out, but.
Community?
I, I, I still go back to the, the work versus live thing. I think, I think live trumps work right now, because I still believe that people that want to be somewhere now, again, it's the social, not the financial, and we're trying to say it's the financial when we're saying work versus live. And I think that's the opposite of where every trend is going right this minute. As far as choosing to live somewhere, it is not based on business and where the businesses are, it's where the social is.
I don't think that is, I don't know, maybe I'm losing you, but I don't think that's what she's necessarily saying.
No, I, I'm, I'm just saying.
No, I'm kind of, yes, and also I'm saying that too. So, you've talked about a great place to live and I, I just don't, well, and again, I guess I'm not clear where we are in this thing. So, are we using these goals or the goals that are listed out?
We're, we're going to use these goals, but I'm asking sort of what's missing on this, because I'll give you an example. If I'm a resident looking at that, where's the, where's the one of these that we're going to point to and go, "So, are you going to fix my streets?"
Yeah, exactly. So, it, it's, it's quality of life.
Are you going to show up if my house is on fire or I've burglared?
Yes, that's, that's, that's what I mean.
So, where, where is that in here?
I, I would say it falls under operational excellence or making it easier to do business, financially responsible, like, I would say those all fall under it. Do we, and then so underneath each one of these, you would say, you know, safety and security would fall under operational excellence. Efficient and effective delivery of services would fall under operational excellence. But I don't, I mean, I don't care.
Well, I think you're probably right there, but I think you still need to call that out just perception wise, that you got to have it more of a.
Is it at the top or is it underneath something?
So, do we want to strip out one, like, maybe efficient, effective delivery of services and make that a goal? I, I don't like, I mean, I guess that's fine, efficient and effective, but.
Well, I'm going back and forth with place to live and community.
Yeah.
That, that's clearly the one thing kind of missing in this thing, because we're going to, safety, security, if someone's putting out a fire on my house, operational, that kind of falls in there. When you, and we talked about focusing on the citizen that's there. Now, it's the last piece is me physically, where am I putting my head at night and why? And I, I'm going back and forth, place to live or like, is that sense of community? The community is why I'm there.
Sense of community, yeah.
No, that's what I'm saying, that's what I think I'm confused as to where we are now because, because all those things do contribute to a great place to live, right? Quality development, efficient, effective services, all that stuff, yes.
All those things.
But I was thinking we're, we were creating new.
Why, why it just keeps saying that? These are all.
A new list.
I think these are all going away and being replaced by these.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, we're trying to get that, we're, we're trying to get this number down. We're trying to get it down into something more manageable than eight or nine.
Okay, then what you're missing is, if you're going with this list, you're missing anything that talks about a great place to live, which is both quality of life and also to the, to the point that the mayor made, which is, people now, they work from home a lot and they're choosing to live places where they can work from home and also have all those social, community engagement, quality of life aspects. So, which is why Granberry's trying to beef up their internet infrastructure, whatever. For us, we already have that, in my opinion. That's why I say I like to live here.
We just don't have a lake.
Right. Right. Well, there's one close, but we have trails, we have parks, we have, I can walk out my house and be on the trail. My husband works from home, it's fine, it's all great.
Yeah, I think this hits a community. I, I think that covers it better. It, that's, it's a little more all in common thing comment. I, I think that's a good bullet to keep.
Because most people are now thinking, like I said, I could live here and I could work in, my job's in Dallas, I don't mind driving. It's like, I want to actually plant a garden. I want to have chickens in my backyard. I want to be able to go, my kid's good friend is five houses down. And where, I could build my own home office, because that is 50% of what, what's happening now. So, that's a sense of community or place, I don't know what other word to use other than community, I guess.
I agree with that. And that includes also the parks and the library and everything else too.
It is, yes, it does.
Yeah.
Yep.
Concerts.
Is there anything more than just a sense of community? As far as like what we're going to put on paper?
I think there will be, but.
No, I mean, how you say that, like, a sense of community, that's a goal, a sense of community.
Yeah, there will be. Well, and I think there's some, there's a better way of saying that, but if, if you all acknowledge that it's there, I'm going to suggest that if you think of, those are the big categories, then by in the morning, we have something for you to shoot at that's more specific.
Okay.
That's staff work, not counting, right? That's, that's staff work that we slash I can do, that, you know, to give you something to look at, because other, to, to have you wordsmithed, it is not the best use of your time from a creation. You need to be editing and wordsmithing. If that makes sense?
Yes.
But, if you think about categories, this covers efficient, effective, you've got financially responsible, we're going to get that great place to live from us and a great place to work here. And we're going to talk a little bit about easier to do business with in general as an operating philosophy. The only other thing that I don't see that I would ask you about is, you've talked a lot about business corridors, business redevelopment, redeveloping space. Does that cover easier to do business with or is that covered someplace else?
As a, if this is, if the whole point of this is to be a thousand foot view, then it's, it is that.
Is it in there?
Because it would be like, okay, I want to, I'm just going, some company wants to come in, they're like, "Great." And they're like, "We could revitalize that area, we could be right there." Like, it all is just encompassed in that.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. We can get there, as long as you see we can get there.
Okay, except that it, you, you're looking at that from just a purely business focus, but we've also, you know, in our minds, staff minds, when you say revitalization, redevelopment, we're also thinking about residential and neighborhoods. So, like revitalizing older neighborhoods, for example. So, I don't know if that covers that. If y'all feel like it does, then.
I feel like then that would fall under community.
No.
No?
Something maybe with the, the targeted economic development? Is that a word?
Or, or if we're redoing a, a neighborhood, wouldn't that be a company coming in or a developer coming in, would that still be business?
It could be an individual.
So, yeah, it, so for example, we have a, a program now in part of our city, it's slowed down a lot so that we may need to designate another area, but it's a neighborhood revitalization program. And we, we incentivize individuals who want to basically re, re-flip their home, but they, there's criteria, they have to live there, they can't flip it and sell it and rent it, whatever. They have to live there for a certain period of time, but, so yes, it could be individuals as well, not just businesses.
Yeah, aren't they still, I, I see what you're saying.
Yes.
Yeah.
But even an individual would still be doing business with the city, they need to get help.
Right, right. So, that, that part will be easier to do business with. But this notion, for example, so that incentive program to reinvest, you're, are you doing sidewalk replacement programs?
Yeah, we have that too.
That's a revitalization effort, it's a sidewalk replacement issue. You all, like, you, you want to know what that is, right? We're doing sidewalk replacement. So, those are things that are all designed to help redevelop. Are you doing grants for HOAs?
No.
Okay. There are some that do that.
So, maybe a category potentially could be something like stimulate economic growth and neighborhood revitalization? Does that capture everything? No? Maybe too exclusive?
I guess I, I think of it, yeah, I think of it more of that kind of thing, revitalization as community development, not necessarily just economic development.
So, stimulate community development.
Right. But then on the other side of that, talking about making things easier, you're, you're talking about holistically making our processes easier. So, it's not just a business, I get it, you're saying business with the city, but that, that means making like any, any of our processes easier. Yeah, yeah, it's more operational, right.
I just feel like that, I guess that's just such a unique thing, revitalization, that theoretically it's covered in three different bullet points. We just didn't say the word revitalize.
We also haven't said anything specifically about safety either, but it's covered, you know?
So, by the way, now you're beginning to understand how they ended up with eight.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, 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 and I let you sort of go through that because not that we, you should come up with eight, but part of this is not only where we need to focus on our own efforts, and I think we can target this down to five or six, but the other part of it is, there are certain times that we, we say things, it's like efficient, effective delivery of services, all right? So, then why do we have to have safety and security? Because somebody's going to look at that and go, "Oh, you're not interested in that." So, that, that's sort of how it gets there. But this gives us something to work with. Would you be okay with saying, "Let's look at that tomorrow, we refinalize that"? So, let me tell you kind of back up where we are. We're actually in a good spot. We're actually in a very good spot. So, the idea would be tomorrow morning, when we kick off, we have like five or six things that focus, we've taken this, we've taken feedback, we've focused them down, we have five or six things that you look at those tomorrow morning, first thing.
Perfect.
Second, from there, we're going to start asking you now, what are the areas of, that are really important for you? But that's where we come up with, I know this is going to surprise you when I say this, street maintenance. That will, these are the things that you as council say, "Yeah, we want to do those things, but these are the things that are really important." Then, then I want to start looking at, what are the measures that you would look at to justify success? How will you know this, this has happened? Because that's the scorecard that you're going to hold, you're going to talk to Paulette about, and you'll talk to her about that kind of once a quarter on where you are, and I promise you, she'll talk to all these other folks on it much more often than that. And also, I, I want to get your feedback, for example, you all don't really have performance dashboards at this point. It's a little bit like driving the car without knowing how fast you're going or how much gas you have in the tank or any of that stuff. So, we can talk a little bit about what you would want to see as a performance dashboard. What are those handful of metrics? And if you think about your dashboard, if, if you look at your dashboard that shows up all the time, whether you have on your dash or you have view on your windshield, if you had, if you have heads up view, there are only five or six things that show up all the time. Now, there's a whole bunch of warning lights that go off. So, I want, you want us to think about, what are those five or six things, seven things, whatever it is? And then what are the warning lights you want to make sure? That, you know, if the, if the air pressure in the left rear tire is down, you want to know. So, so we'll hit that tomorrow.
So, let me, one comment about that. So, there's, there is, having turned around a few businesses, the, the availability of information in order to report on, sometimes they're saying, "Oh, I want you to report on this." And it's like, all of a sudden you go, "Well, uh, don't capture that data, so I've got to figure out how to capture that data," which is now a, a little bit more involved process. Is there a way that we can know what is available as far as reporting and, as far as what, what metrics do we follow now? What metrics do we capture and what would we report on? And then also, is there, I, I think the thing that, from an industry standard perspective, right? That, what, what are the, what are the metrics that go out there to benchmark against for other cities and things like that? I, I'm not asking for an answer right now. I'm just saying tomorrow, that, that's kind of where I'm going to go with the next question. It's like, I, I need to know what's available, what's out there internally, what's externally to compare ourselves to as well.
On, on the internal piece, Paulette, before you answer, on the internal piece, would it work if you said, "I'd like to know, I'd like to be able to know this and let them And let them come back and tell you, be able to respond with, okay, we can, we have that, yay. Or we don't have that directly, but we can get there, this place, we can get there this way, this way, and this way to get you closer. So they're calibrating more to what you're, then the next question is, is there something that's a performance metric you haven't thought of yet?
I'm sure there is.
Yeah. And so what are those?
Give it time.
So, so it would be helpful to have you all first articulate, what is it that you want to, that you want us to report on? What are those metrics you want to see? What are the important things? And if we, and if you can narrow it down to, you know, four or five, that would be better. Because I'll say that we, so we, we, y'all may or may not know that we just, we were just now completing a transition to a new ERP system. And, um, saying that, you also need to know that we were very far behind in what we used to use before this. So we are now capturing a lot more data, um, than, than we used to. We are still in the process of figuring out kind of our own internal dashboards and also, uh, how to harness that, if that makes sense. So.
Absolutely.
So that's why I'm saying it would be more helpful for you all to tell us, these are the things that as a council, we, we feel like are the important metrics. And then we can back into that in our, in our own system, so.
And as you think about that council, I'm going to go back to, there are three things basic we can measure, activities, results, and perceptions. And, you know, perception and results are actually lagging indicators. So, you know, we get citizen scores, we do every two years. Right? So we get, you know, but there's some indicators that we can know in advance that if these things are going right, citizen scores are going to be where we want them to be. So let's be thinking about those things as well.
And along those lines, real quick, that would also help us if there are things, so from our survey, the intention was, y'all know we've, we've, we've put it, we've implemented a new, um, survey system that would allow us to do more, you know, drill down kind of surveys more often. It would be helpful to know if there's things like from the citizen survey, for example, that you want to be able to survey, um, the citizens periodically, or if there's things that come up, you know, that you're aware of right now or that come up that you want us to use that survey tool for.
Let's review the day. Are you tired? A little? You're energized, I know. And you've got.
Look, see, he's drinking a five hour energy. I told you.
It's just weird.
And you're almost done. We, we got to quit soon. You're almost done with your water.
You're going to be healthier than all of us.
Yeah. So what we covered today. We spent a lot of time talking about, a little time talking about where you, where the city has been and your reaction to that, which is excellent. It gives us a starting point. But that's the rearview mirror at this point. We spent some time talking about council and staff and roles and responsibilities and working relationships and all those things. Overall, I want to congratulate you for having that conversation. It's one of those things that, uh, coming out of your season. I'll, I'll tell you, when I looked at it, you know, when I heard things initially, because I, once we scheduled this and once Paulette said we want to talk, I started, I started going back and reviewing. There's some crazy stuff out there, folks. But, yeah. And I went back and looked at it and said, wow, this is going to be interesting. And then I got to meet all of you. And it's like, wow, this is going to be a wonderful group. This is fun. This is going to be, this is people who are engaged, they're, you know, whatever. So I want to congratulate you for having that conversation today to clear that up. We talked about mission. I'm really excited. I think you have a strong mission statement. I hope you believe it too. We have good idea on the vision. We know we, where we are for now and where we need to work toward for six months. We have some basic ideas of overall categories that we want to focus on going forward so that tomorrow we can start setting some priorities. By the way, there don't have to be a dozen priorities on each of these. I mean, you look at what these guys have done in the past, what was done. You know, for every one of these, there have been four or five different things. You don't have to have four or five different, you can have one or two. And that's fine. Uh, it's the right one or two. So we're, we're going to get to that tomorrow. Overall, how's the day been?
Productive, very helpful.
Suzie, yes? Yeah?
I think an important distinction is it's been pretty positive. Like there's not been a lot of, we've had a few minor disagreements, but it feels like everybody's on the same page moving forward. So I think that's a real good thing.
Good.
Kind of touching on one thing, uh, since Tito wasn't here, the, the, the local and regional, uh, issue as far as leadership goes, that was, it's not like we want to abandon that. It's just from a, a a resident focus, if you will, thinking that we're not distracted to that versus them first. Um, and I think trying to take that out of, as a, as a headline item, but not, not abandoning the idea of doing that. Yeah, it, it, being a tool versus a, a goal. So, um, and what you think you were like completely throwing the baby out with the bathwater there.
Ricky, what did you think?
I think it's been extremely positive. And I think, like most of you guys said, we've, we're more aligned than, uh, I think we thought. So of course we're going to have some disagreements and that's to be expected. And that's actually what we need. So I, I think it's been extremely productive, very positive. Positive day.
Go back to there. There we go. Anything else? I want to congratulate, Paulette, what did you think today?
Well, I was just going to ask since the staff wasn't here at the beginning, I think it would be helpful if the mayor read it from his statement, you know, kind of his comments about the, the feelings about staff, um, since they're here now.
Okay.
Not to put you on the spot.
That's okay. I don't mind. I've been put on the spot my whole life, so. Um, I have notes in here somewhere, but what basically that I said um, was it, in, in some of the comments, it was like the, the words NRH leadership. And, um, I really was talking about the mayor and the council when I was talking about that. Um, previous, uh, as far as, you know, what, what I felt like was not done appropriately, not this group of people. Um, also, one of the most important things I said, when I've noticed here as far as the staff goes, is the patience, uh, responsiveness, uh, and, and really being a, especially the patience part, uh, me asking a thousand questions. And everybody responding nicely and, and really trying to be helpful and, and just getting me up to speed. So, um, I, you know, I do apologize that I have asked a lot of questions, uh, just because I'm, I, I, I learned from the bottom up, not from the top down. Uh, but I have really appreciated all this stuff. And I think, I think the perception of most everyone out there is that, that the staff is strong, does a really good job. And, um, everything that is said and done is appreciated. And the idea that some of the rumors and whisper campaign that's still out there, um, that we're going to, you know, huge budget cuts and slashing lots of people is just that. Um, it's a, it's a rumor. I mean, you can read the full comments, uh, when they're posted out there. Uh, but you know, the, and I said, my favorite rumor is, is that I'm going to get rid of Paulette and it's going to be a mayor run city. Um, because I didn't want a real job, so I didn't want to do that anyway. But I, I still get a kick out of it because it's like, I don't know where some things come from. And you just read them and go, really? Wow, that's so interesting. So anyway. Uh, I feel as though that you're all really appreciated it. And I, I don't think there's, we're looking at positive change, not big, huge change for change sake. So thank y'all for coming this afternoon.
By the way, staff, did, did you all see the new mission statement? Staff, you said, we saw that. Okay, right. Tito, you didn't?
Oh. No.
Would you like to see it, Tito?
Sure.
Let me go back to. Any reaction to that? Yeah. I mean, I think, so the last question I would ask you is this, did we do the work of the city today and other, and other residents?
Probably so.
Good. So thanks you all for your participation. I mean, again, I want to congratulate you because we're out here 45 minutes early. And when's the last time that ever happened, right? So.
Forty-five minutes early and a couple of hours ahead.
And a couple of hours ahead. So tomorrow I expect will be, um. All right.
I'm getting paid to be here, dang.
I'll turn it back to you for you to, uh, for, I, I know you have public comments.
For the cleanup business, yes. Okay. Uh, there's an opportunity for students to address the city council on matters which are scheduled on this agenda for consideration for the city council, but not scheduled for the public hearing in order to address the city council. During public comments, a public meeting appearance card must be completed and presented to the city secretary prior to the start of the city council meeting. Alicia, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, mayor.
Okay. Well, thank you. Uh, then we're going, the city council will continue discussion tomorrow, February, uh, February, oh my lord, have mercy. Uh, Friday, January, yeah, we're going to stay in here a long time. Uh, Friday, January 12th, beginning at 8:30 AM again, here at the city hall in the community room. With that, the city council's goals and planning work session is at recess at 3:44. We'll see you tomorrow.